Welcome to the first virtual meeting of the Boston School Committee. We are, um, we are in search of our script. So, uh, folks, uh, this is the third and final fiscal year 21 budget hearing hosted by the Boston School Committee and Superintendent Brenda Casellius. And, um, I just want to make sure, can everyone hear me and see me?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Well, as I mentioned, this is our first attempt at a digital meeting. So I hope you all bear with us tonight as we navigate this new platform together. So before we get started with the meeting, I want to take a minute first to thank Mayor Walsh and his staff, Dr. Casellius and her team for all their tireless work on behalf of our students and families during this trying time. Our Boston Public Schools staff from the bus drivers and cafeteria workers, to custodians and school police, to school leaders and school teachers, and to our central office staff and executive team, and all those volunteers from elsewhere in city government and across our community that have worked to make this difficult transition manageable. They've maintained vital learning tools for our students and the food services has sustained so many of our fellow Bostonians. So thank you to all of you. We are indebted and we will remember. This is neither the first nor last time that we will recognize your efforts and sacrifices. But for my fellow members and for those watching online and at home, please join me in a brief round of applause. So, uh, as we move on tonight, we're going to move on and hear from the superintendent in just a moment. But I wanted to set a bit of, um, an ex- a level of expectations for those that are participating as well as watching this evening. Both the budget hearing, which is beginning now, as well as the meeting, uh, the regular school committee meeting that's scheduled for 6:00 PM, are being recorded and will be posted on the BPS website at a later date. If you'd like to testify this evening during the budget hearing but have not yet signed up, please email our Executive Secretary Liz Sullivan at e Sullivan three at Boston Public Schools dot org. Uh, again, that's E Sullivan three at Boston Public Schools dot org. You can also use budget at Boston Public Schools dot org. Sign up for public comment will close at 5:30 PM. Now, in a few moments, Chief Financial Officer Nate Cooter will provide us with the superintendent's revised FY 21 budget proposal. But with, again, as I mentioned earlier, with everything going on with the COVID-19 virus and changes afoot in our district, I think it'd be appropriate for the, um, for us to first invite Superintendent Casellius, excuse me, Superintendent Casellius to provide us with her superintendent's report to start off the evening. Dr. Casellius.
Thanks, Mr. Care, and thanks, everybody, for joining us, joining us virtually in this new environment that we're all getting used to. First, I want to get started and give a huge, huge BPS proud shout out to our entire team at BPS. Everyone's just been so outstanding, but there's a few people that I'd like to thank tonight at the end especially. These are incredible, difficult times, and I want to start off by just, again, thanking everyone in the community for coming together, our families, our parents, the mayor's office team, um, our state partners, just everybody has just been so incredible, the generosity, the ingenuity of our teachers, pulling together, um, just a lot of selflessness that has been going on in the district, and it's quite inspiring. We are in this together, as I've said, it's a all hands on deck affair, but, um, when I first said that back this summer, I wasn't sure that it was going to be quite this all hands on deck, but, we're sure glad that there's a whole lot of good people here in Boston and we're Boston strong. Um, so let me share with you a little bit about what we've been up to these past several weeks. As you know, um, the coronavirus started to spread, um, a while back, a few mi- what, a few months back, and so we've been preparing. But it was really two weeks ago that, uh, we made the decision, um, to, uh, really begin to pr- prepare in earnest. And, um, you know, we've been out now of, of school and, uh, kids have been getting free meals and they have been getting their Chromebooks. Um, and, you know, we've just been, um, doing everything we can, but as you know, things just continue to change. And, uh, the newest change for all of us was just most recently at about, uh, four o'clock this afternoon, we heard from our governor that close will, um, schools will be closed until, uh, May 4th. And so that is a new change for all of us, and so we will be ramping up the efforts and, um, beginning to think about what Plan B means, um, and, uh, making sure that families have what they need to, uh, be successful and, and preparing the days for their children. So let me talk specifically about our meals. Uh, we've been providing free meals to our families at 16 different, uh, BPS sites and distribution sites spread across the entire syst- system, both breakfast and lunch, and we've been giving out multiple meals, um, if families have that or for multiple children. So we are not turning anyone away, so we ask that you come Monday through Friday between the hours of eight thirty and eleven thirty. Um, you can find the locations, um, at Boston Public Schools dot org. And there's a number of other emergency meal sites throughout the city that are also available on Boston.gov or simply by calling 311. Um, today, we provided our families over 6,605 breakfast and lunch meals. And as of this afternoon, we've served approximately 40,282 meals since this program launched. That's quite a testament to our food service staff, our Boston School Police who have been there, uh, and our custodians opening up our buildings and ensuring that everybody's maintaining a safe distance. So just so thankful for the volunteers, the many volunteers and our food service, uh, workers who have, uh, put that together. Then, of course, everyone's heard about the Chromebooks, uh, the generosity of the city and, uh, providing our additional 20,000 Chromebooks. We had originally, um, hoped to get a lot of our original Chromebooks that we already had in our schools out, but because of that Monday of our last day of school, um, there was, um, not such good attendance, we have, um, had to readjust our schedule, and then a few days later came the, um, significant pullback of the social distancing. So that too has caused, um, some snags in the delivery, but I am, uh, really happy to report that even with those snags, Mark Racine and his entire team have been able to pull together and distribute over 19,000 Chromebooks to our students. Um, and so we're really, really excited about, um, being able to have those out, plus the ones that we had in our school, and we still have a whole lot more to get out. So you may see me on Twitter, you may see me around talking that we need your help, um, and asking your neighbors if the children have the technology, um, and that, that they could fill out the form. So if you need a Chromebook, we want you to fill out this form at BostonPublicSchools.org forward slash laptop. Again, BostonPublicSchools.org forward slash laptop. The form is available in all 10 district languages, so we want to make sure that, um, if, if you need that, uh, in a different language, it's available for you. We will then contact you and, uh, set up a delivery appointment. So we are making those, uh, home deliveries now, um, and, um, making that available to all families. Um, we also are making available low-cost internet access to, available to families or free, it just depends. So, um, you can get started on your Chromebook, and, um, then you'll get some home learning tips and more, again, at BostonPublicSchools.org forward slash laptop. As for our learning materials, we are continuing to curate learning materials both at school, so some schools have done their own, and then we are doing some, uh, central office curation. So as you know, um, Boston Public Schools has autonomous schools, and some of those schools have decided to, uh, move forward with their learning materials. We also have other schools who have their own websites that they've designed. So from now until, uh, April 27th, uh, schools will be using supplemental, uh, opportunities for learning through either their school-based methods or through our curated district-wide methods. We have packets of information available at all of our food distribution sites, so there are paper-based options. There's plenty of material in there for up to four weeks of learning. Uh, so we hope that, uh, our parents will be able to come and get ahold of those paper-made materials. If they don't, plus we're pushing out new content every day on our digital website, um, and that will be available to all parents on WWW BostonPublicSchools.org. As for the, uh, online learning, so digital resources are available to students and families on Google Classroom and Clever Backpack. These are, uh, information that parents are pretty familiar with now, and many of our schools are already using. So, uh, if you don't have information about that, again, uh, you can go on to BostonPublicSchools.org and this time do forward slash backpack, and you'll be able to get, uh, access to your child's, uh, Google, Google account. Um, we have so many schools doing different things. The McKay is doing Storytime on social media. The Mata Hunt is made famous with their YouTube page and educational videos made by staff. Um, our arts and history, uh, departments have been doing incredibly creative ways to keep kids engaged in both arts and history, um, and the drumming and the playing of music that, that our teachers are doing, uh, in concert with one another across the district is just, uh, really inspiring to see the creativity and the innovation that's happening across, uh, all of our Boston schools and across the city with some of our partners who have just been fantastic in stepping up. Um, so, so far, we've had about 22,000 students online at the same time. Um, so we're testing our bandwidth, we're testing our, um, power and, and making sure that, uh, kids can get on as we continue to navigate through this brand-new environment for all of us. We're not very much accustomed to this new, um, uh, online environment, but we're working through it and we're learning as we go. I think yesterday I was saying, you know, we're flying the plane while, while we're, uh, we're, we're, we're making the plane while we're flying it. Uh, that's, that's how that goes. Um, we've also been having virtual meetings. My team and I continue to stay connected with each other. We're holding virtual meetings all day. I said that I got Zoomized because I've been looking at my screen most of the day, um, outside of when I went and visited some of our food sites earlier today. I've hosted a series of conference calls with school leaders, um, including one in which Mayor Walsh joined us, um, because things are changing hour to hour, and, um, I think it's just really important that we articulate exactly what's going on and that everyone has really, uh, accurate information and up-to-date information. We've been holding daily check-in meetings since school closure to discuss operational plans. We've provided one another with status updates around food security, um, around technology, homelessness, partnering with the city on a number of other projects. It's just incredibly, incredibly busy. Every single minute of the day is packed to make sure that our, um, families and children have the essential services that they need as well as their academic learning. Um, you know, all of you know I'm also on the mayor's cabinet, so I've been in constant communication with my other city colleagues. Um, and we've been problem-solving and collaborating as a full, uh, community and as a full city on this. Yesterday, we closed our buildings to the public aside from the 16 emergency meal sites. This was due to new, uh, information from the CDC and to control the spread of the coronavirus. Uh, school leaders have been in and out of the schools, handing out materials to families and answering questions. Uh, they're also monitoring the learning with their school, um, teachers and making sure that they are, um, being able to connect with their, uh, students. Custodians have been doing regular maintenance and cleaning of our buildings, uh, and the Elliott Building has been fully cleaned and disinfected. We're also very mindful of extra cleaning and social distancing measures at our food, uh, and delivery sites, so we're making sure that that gets done as well. A lot of folks have been asking about special ed, and I want to update you on what's happening with our students with disabilities and the supports that we're able to provide, given the restrictions that we have around, um, social distancing. Our special education team has just been doing incredible job of working to set up at least weekly contact with our students through Google Classroom and by phone to support, uh, distance learning, just like our other general ed teachers are doing for all of our BPS students. And over the last couple of days, members of our Office of Special Education made 4,252 calls to contact special education families of students with door-to-door transportation to offer delivery of free meals in multiple languages. We cannot thank our team enough for rallying so that we had that touch point with all of our special ed students. Educators have delivered assistive technology to homes as well as Chromebooks to support online learning. Special ed team coordinators are reaching out to families to continue scheduling IPT meetings online during, uh, online during this time, so that students with disabilities will have ongoing services pursuant to their education plans, and that, um, that remains, um, a, a huge focus for us. Schools have set up tiered supports to provide families via online channels, uh, with phone calls and virtual meetings. Um, and related service providers like school counselors or behavioral health staff, um, have established schedules of consultations with students with disabilities to provide necessary supports during this difficult time. We are in the process of ensuring that each and every child has what they need, who is a special ed student. Uh, we know that that's individualized by family. There's no one blanket plan that's going to work for any one family, given their personal and, um, learning needs, and so we're working with individual families on what that, what's reasonable for them and what makes sense for them. As for athletics, I want to congratulate the Burke Bulldogs who defeated St. Mary's in the Division III Boys Basketball semifinals. Since the state finals were canceled due to the coronavirus emergency, the Bulldogs will go down as Division III State Champions. I want to give a shout out to all our student athletes, many of them who participated in postseason play. This has been difficult for all of our students and has, of course, impacted our spring athletics. I want to just provide a little update about youth, and I know that Evelyn is going to also provide an update, so I look forward to hearing directly from her and her thoughts on our conversations. And I'll be meeting again with the, um, BSAC and Youth Cabinet tomorrow. As you know, we have incredibly amazing kids who are incredibly resilient and can meet all of our expectations. And they just had incredible feedback and suggestions for how we can serve them and serve them better. They asked about access to hygiene products, um, and so we worked with Katie's Closet to provide the soaps and shampoos, oral care, menstrual products, um, all at our 16 distribution sites that started this week. I'm working closely with BSAC and the Youth Cabinet, weekly, to engage with them and answer their questions and hear their suggestions and adjust as necessary. I've even launched a new Instagram account, uh, to host town halls and other live events with the youth. They asked me to set up this account, so I did. I'm at SUPT Casellius, Soup Casellius, if you go to Instagram. For the older ones among us, um, I also have a Twitter, um, and so you can find me at B Casellius, um, at B Casellius on Twitter. Um, I'm usually updating multiple times a day with, um, all of the updates that are going on, as well as all the wonderful work that's going on. And then I retweet, uh, our teachers and others who, uh, tagged me in their tweets, um, so that people can see the just great work that's going on. So during this difficult time, as it's important for us to stay connected and to ensure that information we're getting is accurate and up to date. And you can always go to the Boston Public Schools website where we are updating our information frequently and sometimes, um, by the hour. So again, just I want to thank, um, everybody and, uh, then give an introduction to the budget. So first, let me thank the parents and the extended family who are pitching in with the teaching and learning activities for our students to be thrown into teaching all day long, um, is quite a task. So I thank you so very much for, uh, being patient with us as we get you the materials and as we get you the Chromebooks. Um, we've never done this before, so, uh, your patience just means a lot to all of us as we, as we work through some of the snags. I also want to thank Mayor Walsh, Mayor Walsh during this time for steadfast leadership, for the support of our kids, for providing them with Chromebooks. And although we're still working to reach all our families, um, I know that this is essential for them to stay connected to their learning, to their classmates and to their teachers. So please help us, uh, get access to families who need these services and other wraparound services. And again, I just take another moment to thank my senior team, Charlene Briner, Chief of Staff, Andrea Zayas, Chief Academic Officer, Monica Roberts, Corey Harris, Mark Racine, who has been, uh, is incredible, fantastic IT guy. We all need a good IT guy. Charles Grandson for keeping our eye on equity, Tammy Pous, who was our COVID czar and now is helping us with some of our labor issues as well, and, and our special ed, uh, support systems, just very, uh, incredible, our human capital team, um, in labor with L. Taylor, Sam DePina, who stepped up with our food nutrition person, uh, people and workers and support staff. Uh, just the whole entire team, our superintendents who have pitched in. I know I'm missing some of them, but, um, the senior team has just been incredibly outstanding, uh, during this time. So, um, I just want to thank all of them, and of course Nate Cooter, who, uh, has, will share tonight the amazing work that he and the entire budget team has done to look forward toward next year's budget. Keeping us on track during this crisis has been important for the continuity in the plan for next year. And although we're not able to present tonight on our final strategic plan and the DESI review update, this budget is directly reflective of that body of work and will lift up key areas of focus for all of us these next three years. As you all know, the mayor has committed to $100 million over the next three years despite this virus. We are forging ahead and also being cautious. Today, we made the difficult decision to suspend all non-essential spending. We are taking this step so that we can revisit future purchasing, given our evolving reality and the many unknowns we know we will call, encounter as we resume normal operations from academics to facilities. We'll be watching our budget closely and have already from day one coded all spending specific to COVID so that we could accurately account for, um, and be ready in case we, uh, are provided additional relief, either at the federal or state or city level. With that, I invite Mr. Cooter and his team, um, to speak about the budget.
Thank you, uh, Superintendent. Before we move on to, uh, Mr. Cooter's presentation, um, I want to take a moment, uh, since this was, uh, a pretty big, uh, presentation that you provided for, uh, all of us here, uh, to take a moment and allow the members, uh, an opportunity to ask some questions and, um, and dig in a little deeper on some of the work that we've been doing over the last, uh, few weeks as a district to respond to the, uh, the COVID crisis. So I know Vice Chair Oliver Dabla wanted to speak, uh, so let's move to her first, and then members can let me know if there's others that want to speak up.
Um, thank you, Jerry. Um, I, I also just wanted to take a moment to thank all of the, uh, families, because I know this is a really challenging time for all of us. I want to thank everyone for their flexibility and patience and absolutely thank all the BPS staff, because I know it was, uh, tight turnaround. And thank the superintendent for her leadership and her leadership team. Um, I know we're, you know, packing up meals and doing all kinds of things, you know, from Mark Racine delivering Chromebooks. And also thank the city for the speedy action and all the supports. I have been on a bunch of phone calls, I'm sure my colleagues have as well, um, where I've heard really great feedback about, um, the ability to be able to get food and having the food sites and also, um, being able to access the Chromebooks. So I really want to, um, thank you on, on that piece. I wanted to ask a couple of questions, um, around, um, the materials for students. If there is, if there are materials that are, um, in different languages, uh, and is there, uh, also, um, uh, a way for families, um, to, uh, who are not, you know, dominant English speakers to be able to log on or to call somebody, um, and if you could talk a little bit, um, about that. And also, if, um, is there any kind of training? Because we've heard a lot from, uh, different families around not everybody being so versed in technology, and will there be any kind of virtual type of trainings or something for families? That's question two, and then number three is just, I'm wondering about our ability and capacity to be able to call each family. Um, so I heard you talk about calling the sped families, but actually calling all of our families via phone to kind of get, uh, an assessment on what are some of the needs. Um, there's a lot of resources out there right now. Um, and so being able to connect, um, families with those resources. And obviously, I, I don't think this is all BPS. Um, you know, I know many of us who are partners are happy to be part of that endeavor to actually be calling families and find out what are some of the real significant needs and how we can provide those.
Yeah, so thank you, Alex. Um, we are providing, um, uh, language and, uh, materials through our EL Services and our OEL Department. So, but most of those are digital, so that's why it's really important for us to get the materials out, um, the Chromebooks out to our students, um, and so, because, because most of the content that we have is, is, um, digitally translated. So that's, that's a barrier that we're working through right now. Um, and we, as far as contacting our parents, um, we have, um, done some work with our, uh, robo-collar and working with some of our, our families to make sure that we connected with them. Rob Consalvo probably can speak to that a little bit more than me and the, on the contact that we did, as well as our central office staff. And then we're depending a lot on our teachers. There is an expectation for them to connect with their children every single week. And so, uh, we are doing touchpoints and we're asking our principals to follow up with our teachers, um, so that they're connecting with students. The difficult thing is, again, this is also contingent upon, um, being able to do that digitally. Um, and so we're asking, uh, principals and teachers also if they might be able to call, um, and get phone numbers. Some of our phone numbers are, have not been updated. As you know, we have a highly, um, mobile population. So we do have some barriers there, and some of our addresses have not been correct as well. And so we're trying to figure out how we can, um, get some of that information updated too.
Can I just ask one question, uh, Dr. Casellius and I? Um, I'm sorry if I, if I'm a little slow on the take. Um, but the phone calls that we've been getting, so I've been getting phone calls from my daughter's school, which are actually bilingual, but the ones from you have been in English, is there an option? Am I missing something? Because I'm not getting those ones in Spanish, so I just want to make sure that our families are getting your messages in whatever language that.
Yeah, so I tried to say that I would, um, try my Spanish on them, and they told me I couldn't do that. And I did take French, you know, in high school, but they were like, mm, let you just, you can only do the English one. So, um, I think Mark could probably answer that technique, tech, uh, tech question a little bit better than me and how that happens on the backend. But I do know that we are interpreters, then, do read the robo-script and then send it out. I just don't know how our, um, how our backend knows that, what language to send it out in, or if there's an option for them to pick an option.
I can jump in here. So the, the calling system does have every parent's, uh, language preference that was entered at the time of registration. And so as long as we're able to load the, uh, translated speech into, uh, the system in time, it will. Um, and if it is only, if there is only one language entered, then it will send it in that, in English.
It is rare that we will only send in English, though, when we do a robo-call, so we, we, um, hold on those until we have them all ready to go typically, unless it's an emergency situation that we need to get something out quickly.
Great, thank you. I did hear a lot of, um, comments on that, so I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair. We'll move on now to, um, Ms. Robinson.
Yes, good evening. Um, again, thank you very much for your presentation and thank you for all the extraordinary work that everyone in the district is doing. Um, it's mind-blowing about how people have come together to do all of this work so quickly. I have a question about families. Um, you know, I think all of this, as we all said, has happened very quickly. And I'm most concerned about our families, um, who, um, who struggle the most, who do not necessarily live in housing that gives them extra room, um, in places for, you know, multiple children of various ages to do all of this work, you know, and are equally, um, caring about their, and worried about their children's education. For families who we know are at greater risk, um, is there someone or one group of people who are really checking in with them to see not only that they have the resources that they need, but to really see how they're doing? Because I'm not quite sure if, that, if they're being asked not, did you get everything, but, you know, how is this working for you? Um, you know, if you've got a child that's got special needs and now you've got him and your toddler's home from childcare, et cetera, how are we helping to families who will struggle under normal circumstances, who are probably really struggling out of now, get some relief and some support?
Yeah, it's a really tough question, um, Jerry, and I'm also worried about our families. I really, really am. It's, um, this is a complete shift, like we had no time to plan for any of it. Monica Roberts and her team has been reaching out to partners and, uh, and community to be able to think through some of these ways that we can support our families. They can contact us, um, on our website and say that they need help, um, and so, and they can contact our, um, Monica's office if they need support. They'll tell, they'll tell teachers that they need support, and so then the teachers can tell our social workers and our psychologists and our counselors. Um, so they're also doing touchpoints and consultations with some of our, some of our neediest families. Um, and, and our teachers usually know, and our principals usually know, who are the students in their buildings that they need to watch and, and pay attention to and support. And so, um, they're doing that.
Is somebody also, I mean, I know it's only been a week, but probably after this week, will there be a master list of families that nobody has been able to reach? Um, that have multiple children, so we'll see, to see who may be falling through the cracks. Um, you know, I've talked to a couple of people who have said that, you know, they've had families who needed food, but, but were too embarrassed to go and pick it up, for example. Um, and, you know, and people have been trying to take folks along, so you don't, you know, I'm, I'm worried about, even though we're providing resources, there still may be people who aren't prepared or ready to literally reach out for them.
Yeah, these are all really good ideas and suggestions on how we can just continue to better meet the needs and make sure that kids don't fall through the safety net. Um, and we're looking at all of those options now of what we can do. I know our principals are keeping track of the students that have been connected with and how many have Chromebooks and how many don't. And so, um, the superintendents are, you know, are connecting and communicating with, with them to, um, make sure that they're following up with their kids. to make sure that they're following up with their kids. So that's the best we have right now, but I know that there may be some, once we have everybody online, and if it, you know, it seems as though we're going to be going longer with this, we may need to do something more like physical attendance and looking at taking attendance and, and so, and having teachers put attendance in. So those are some things that we are working through, and whether we can and cannot do that in this virtual environment.
Right, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. We'll move on now to Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Superintendent, to you and your team for the work that you are doing. Extraordinary times require extraordinary effort, and, and that's what we're seeing. Just a couple of clarifying questions, please, on your comment. I'll try to keep it brief. One is, you mentioned if people don't have a Chromebook, they can go to the web slide, the website backslash laptop and sign up for it. What about for families who actually don't have computers, don't have internet access? Is there a phone number they can call? How can they get it?
Yeah, our partners at 311 are helping us, too. So you can also call 311, and they can help you with that and help you navigate it.
Okay, so if families don't have access, instead they should be calling 311?
They can.
And that information gets to BPS. Okay, thank you. Second of all, do we have any plans to be partnering with WGBH? The governor mentioned earlier today that they're trying to put educational programming on Channel 2 from 12 to 5. Are we going to be doing any partnering with that, et cetera?
There's a couple of really creative partnerships with broadcasting, because our, a lot of our broadcasting partners have stepped up. So we're doing some work with BNN and curating some videos with BNN, so that there's storytime and some other opportunities for learning activities on the broadcasting, just in case we can't get the Chromebooks out right away. So that's part of it. Plus, it'll also just give another medium for delivery of content and for, you know, playful activities. And so that's, that's in the works right now with BNN. And our team is, is also doing that. The state commissioner said that he was doing something with WGBH. I'm just not as certain what, what's happening with that, but I know that there's some partnership that the state is doing with WGBH.
Yeah, obviously, you, you have a lot going on. The governor did mention this afternoon that they were trying to on Channel 2, GBH, or whatever the channel is across the state, trying to do educational program from 12 to 5, but it just dawned on me that that may be possibility to do some with the Comcast channels or the cable channels in the city. I think we have three channels that are exclusive for the city, so there may be an opportunity for BPS to do some things. My last question is, I just want to clarify, all of our teachers are currently being paid, correct?
Yes, all of our public employees are being paid.
What are the obligations of our teachers with regards to communicating with students who are doing some type of educational activities for students? Are there obligations currently, or what is the, you know, what will be done about that in, working with, in partnership with the teachers' union?
Yeah, so most of our teachers have really stepped up and have been curating their own digital backpacks and lessons. And then some of our teachers need a little bit more help, who are new to this environment. And so we're working with them. There's a lot of professional development that our academic, academic team has put together for them. All of our teachers have a Chromebook or an Apple top, Apple computer, or whatever kind of computer they have. So all of our teachers do have the access to their Gmail suite, and so they're working with students through that. And so the expectation is that they will be daily working with their student bodies, either individually or in classes and groups and curating lessons for them during the week, whether that's pulling lessons that we curate, or whether that's creating their own lessons during the week. This is non-graded time. This is time where we have supplemental supports for children. But there will be a time, I think, if this continues to go, where we will be looking at probably more centralized supports to create better equity across all the schools.
Thank you. And, and last question, and it may be early, particularly with just today's announcement about the beginning of May versus our April 27 date. Are you starting to think in terms of what we're going to do about grading, particularly I'm thinking in terms of our juniors in high school that are extraordinarily anxious about college, our graduating seniors, those who are finishing at either fifth grade or sixth grade, eighth grade, et cetera?
Yeah, you know, everybody is struggling with this across the nation and what to do, and, you know, higher ed admissions, typically they count on these grades in the last semester for admissions for some of the kids who have been waitlisted. And so, you know, these are really significant decisions to make for, for children in their lives. And so we are looking at all of that. We have looked at advanced placement, the SAT, which has been delayed, and so all of the MCAS in terms of the graduation requirements. So our headmasters are convening and have convened to make recommendations about what we do. So right now, it's a non-graded environment. There are some exceptions to that with some of our classes and courses that kids need. But other than that, it's mostly supplemental at this point, but I do, I do think we will be shifting.
Thank you, Superintendent. And I know it almost goes without saying, but in times like this, you've heard me say a number of times, in the absence of information comes misinformation. So even if maybe frequently asked questions on the website, something like that, and even about some of these issues we just discussed, say, we're thinking about it, we will have an answer, we don't have an answer yet. People at least know what's on your radar screen.
Yeah.
So it's just a thought and suggestion, not that you don't have enough to do.
I mean, I ask the kids to hold tight, because this is their number one question, is graduation, and they want to know about graduation. And so, you know, some of that's waiting on the state, right? I mean, they haven't made a decision on what they want to do, and so, you know.
But even, but even, excuse me for interrupting, I apologize, but even hearing, we're aware of the issue, we're thinking it's, but we don't have a decision yet, helps stop rumors of, well, I hear they're going to do this, I hear they're going to do that. So just a suggestion, but thank you for the great work you're doing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mr. O'Neil. And we are going to go to Dr. Rivera next, and Dr. Rivera, I think your video is off, but I'm going to unmute your mic now. There we go.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm, thank you so much for taking my question. And again, Dr. Casalias, thank you for your amazing leadership. I've been following you on Twitter, and it's been great and inspiring. So I wanted to ask just a couple of questions, real quick ones. So with the MCAS, have you, has, has BPS put in a waiver for that? I saw some comments that you, when you were quoted in a Globe article advocating for to, you know, not have the MCAS this year. Have we officially put in a waiver for that?
So the state has not put in a waiver yet. It would come from the state level, and then also the state would need to do some sort of change on the state level, because there's state law also that requires it. So the, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education would have to put in a waiver to the federal government for the accountability pieces of, of the exam that are required under the new ESSA law, but also they need to figure out what to do with the state law. And so there has not been any guidance issued at this point, and what was in the Globe was a lot of number of groups are saying, it's just, doesn't even make sense to give it this year. And I'm one of those folks. I mean, I've not kept any secrets about my, you know, dislike for standardized testing anyways, at least in terms of high stakes for students. So I think that we're wait, we're still waiting on the state around that.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Regarding some, given the date of May, and this is my other hat, as a manager of one of the summer learning academies and the fifth quarter portfolio programs, many of us are already, you know, trying to recruit students. I think those programs would be so much more important even, given this, to stem the learning loss and, you know, accelerate some of the learning in the summer. Are, is the school district already, you know, planning for maybe expanding some of that, those opportunities in the summer, given that we're, we may not start up in May? Until May? Just, yeah, just a question about resources for those summer learning academies.
So on the Saturday after we closed, I called up Chris Smith and Boston After School and Beyond and started talking with him about our partners and what we could do in terms of summer, because I was already concerned that we might have some summer loss and what that might look like, and how is summer school going to look different, especially given students will have technology now, and what kind of opportunities will that present? And then how could we, how could we partner to create and extend learning throughout the city? So Monica Roberts has been working with him and some of our partners in this very early stages of thinking through some of that, but just quite honestly, we're trying to go day by day here with getting the Chromebooks out and getting the academics for the next six weeks, so that we can prevent some academic loss and, and then planning for the, for the summers coming later, but, but we are thinking about it.
Okay, and then my last question is, you know, again, I have a sixth grader, and his, his teachers have been amazing, some checking in every single day, live Zoom instruction, real engagement, and, but I know that there's some schools where, you know, that's not happening. And so I know you spoke a lot about those challenges. But are there labor issues related to this? Is that, is it why there hasn't been, you know, the daily, the beyond just the availability of the technology? Are there, are there any labor issues that we're, we're facing at this moment in terms of addressing the equity issues in, in, in the instructional piece?
Well, to, you know, again, I think that there's always working conditions issues that you have to work through with your labor unions, and so, but I think that's quite secondary right now. I think we've all just been thrown into a whole new reality that we're not used to, quite honestly. And everybody's just trying to get used to it. Some of our teachers and educators and principals, you know, have families of their own, or they have, you know, you know, they have other responsibilities that they're having to take care of, and, you know, I don't have little kids in the background here, because I'm, I live alone, you know, but then, you know, needing my attention or saying mommy, mommy, this or that. So we're trying to really try to figure through all of, all of the, all of the things you have to think about when you're in this kind of environment. Even with the services that we're going to provide to our special needs students, we were hoping that we might be able to have folks go out to the schools, and now with these sheltering restrictions, we're not able to do that. And that has to be virtual. So every, every moment is a, is a new situation for us to, to work through in terms of access. But to answer your question directly, I'm working with the school superintendents to work with their principals that they have to create some parity across schools, to look at equity so that they have touchpoints with each of their principals and understanding what is and what is not being done, and that best practice is being shared across the schools with the school superintendents, and then the school superintendents doing, gauging across each other about what is and what is not happening within their schools.
Okay, well, thank you again for your amazing leadership during these hard times and your whole team. It's been really inspiring when, on a Friday around 5:30, my son's social studies teacher showed up with a Chromebook on our doorstep. It was amazing. But six feet away, he was six feet away. But thank you again.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Dr. Rivera, and I want to thank all the members for all their thoughtful questions this evening, and you know, there certainly has been a lot for all of us to participate in, as well as deal with in our own home family lives. I have three kids at home myself, who I could tell you, the, the LaCanto homeschool is alive and well. We are meeting from about 10:00 AM to 3:30 PM every day with an hour lunch in between, and I think the schedule has really made the difference for us, but I know that being able to schedule around your own work life and family life and all of the resources that you have available to you really makes a difference for our families. And so, you know, the, the common theme that's run through the comments from each of our members this evening has been that we want to make sure that we're providing the necessary, the necessary baseline for each student to be able to access this equal level of education. And so I thank you, Superintendent, for ensuring that your folks have been doing that. And quite frankly, you know, I want to go back to some of your comments, you know, some of the numbers that you shared have, quite frankly, have been staggering, you know, the, the Chromebooks first and foremost. I believe I heard you say Mr. Racine and his team have distributed over 19,000 Chromebooks at this point, which is just an incredible number, considering that this really only began in earnest, I think, last Wednesday or Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. And it's really relied on a, a whole core of volunteers that have driven these individual Chromebooks out to students' houses all across the city. As you had mentioned, we, we were originally frustrated with our initial plan, which was to distribute the Chromebooks through the food sites, but certainly with.
Well, actually, if we would have had better attendance, then we could have had a lot more at school.
And, you know, with social distancing rules, we had to adapt on the fly, and, and your folks have been really doing great adapting on the fly. And I'd say the same thing is true for the, the food deliveries that our, our staff has been undertaking, especially for students most in need, the students with special needs that might not be able to get out of the house and might normally have a one-to-one that requires a little bit extra. And so going above and beyond the duty and rising to the occasion has been the consistent theme amongst all of our staff. And so, again, we're truly indebted to the work that everyone's been doing.
Yeah, thank you so much. I know that our team appreciates all of your support from the, from the school committee and, and all our families, too, and just thank our families. I just, I cannot thank our families enough for, for the incredible work that they're doing, keeping our kids safe. And if they need help, I, I hope they will reach out to their teachers or their school principal and, and get the help they need, or call 311 for sure.
Absolutely. So before we move on, I know Mr. Cooter is coming up next with a budget presentation, and we're going to take a vote to accept the superintendent's report in just a moment. I first want to make an announcement. For folks that are following along at home or online, we do have a list of public commenters. Folks have been emailing in to Ms. Sullivan to get on that list. That list is now closed. However, we want to make sure that, as we're taking a look at the attendees list, that we have the names for each of the attendees that have signed in on Zoom, match the name that was given for the public comment list, so that we can easily find you and open up the opportunity for you to comment when your name is called. So if you could all take a moment, we have probably a half hour or so before we get to public comment. While Mr. Cooter does his presentation, and we have some brief questions from the, the membership. If you could take a look at what your screen name looks like through Zoom and ensure that that reflects your, your name that you provided for public comment earlier today. So thank you for that. Members, are there any other further questions or comments? Mr. O'Neil, it looks like you might be looking to say something.
Sorry, I was sickly going to say, could you also provide participants help with how they could actually change that if need be? I believe it is down, they go down to participant, and then next to their name, if they click to the right of their name, then on the participant list, then one of the options will pop up to rename their screen name.
Oh, thank you. Live IT help on the fly.
Helps to work in a digital firm.
Yeah, exactly. Well, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. And if folks making a motion would unmute their mic, that would be appreciated. Well, thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? All right, hearing none, the report is approved. At this time now, I'd like to move on to Nate Cooter, our Chief Financial Officer, to proceed with his presentation on the FY21 revised budget.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. LaCanto and members of the school committee. Good evening. Tonight, I'll be going through our presentation on the FY21 budget. And as I share my screen with you now. And so thank you for joining us tonight at tonight's budget hearing. Tonight, we'll be asking the school committee to vote on an. Tonight we'll be asking the school committee to vote on and approve our $1.26 billion budget. In this presentation, I'll provide a brief overview of the superintendent's budget proposal and will provide details about what has changed from the original submission to the school committee on February 5th. This is a first for me in terms of, uh, presenting online and is obviously in response to our current and unprecedented circumstances. So I wanted to start by doing two things. The first is just a technical note. All of the materials for our budget, including our presentation tonight, have been posted online at bostonpublicschools.org/budget. The second thing I want to do to start is to express a note of gratitude. First to the mayor and the city team for their commitment to education in the city. And second to the superintendent, the district leadership team and to all of the school leaders who have put students first in the development of this budget. And finally, and most important to me personally, I want to thank my amazing team. That starts, of course, with David Bloom, my deputy CFO, for his leadership and of the, for the budget and for the budget team, to a new giant, our grants director, and to the six members of the budget team who worked tirelessly all winter long and who only get a brief moment of recognition tonight. Dr. Yvonne McCray, Cynthia Beltray, Chris Williams, Tressa Janati, Tunji Onomade, and Mary Gillan. I'm starting my last FY21 budget presentation with the same slide that I shared at each presentation. We are proud that our budget process is rooted in this statement from the opportunity and achievement gap policy. We recognize the, the need to redouble our efforts to close opportunity and achievement gaps and to guarantee an excellent education for all of our students. By focusing on those students who need public education the most and providing intensive to support to those schools that are struggling to improve, we can ensure that all students have the same opportunity to achieve greatness. At the first budget hearing, I discussed the instructional core, which is the interaction between students, teachers, and content. Our budget is designed around the straightforward premise that there are three ways to increase student learning. First, to increase the knowledge and skill of teachers. Second, to change the content. And third, to alter the relationship of the student to the content and the teacher. 100% of the funding is directed to impacting the student experience through the instructional core. It's $9 million to support students and families through new resources directly on school budgets. 12 million directed to instructional quality and enhancing the educational opportunities for students throughout the district. And 15 million about high-quality learning materials and resources. An investment in everything from the basics like cleanliness and to modernizing technology as we've done rapidly in the last two weeks. Our FY21 budget proposes an $80 million increase in BPS. Of this, 36 million is new investments directly in schools. The remaining 44 million represents the increased cost of operations and the cost of implementing salary and benefits cost of the new Boston Teachers Union contract. Here's the truly exciting news as the superintendent has already mentioned tonight, that this is not just a single-year commitment to invest in new services and supports for students. The mayor has announced continued support in future year with 100 million in new investments coming over three years. This means that we'll have an unprecedented opportunity to discuss this year's budget, not just as a one-off infusion of spending, but as a strategic rollout of our vision for educating students in Boston. This year's focus, as we discussed at the school's, uh, hearing a few weeks ago, is on the 33 transformation schools. As we experience enrollment shifts, we do see some decreases in staffing and budgets at some schools. But as a district, this budget positions us to improve our lowest-performing schools and continue to invest in ways to stabilize enrollment. For example, schools that are adding new grades and programs are adding new positions for things like sixth grade expansion. But we're working with the schools that are losing enrollment to reduce costs over multiple years. And then the net result being that we are adding teaching staff across the district. And this slide summarizes, um, the total investment in teaching staff that we're seeing overall. With, uh, with, uh, investments in new K-2 paraprofessionals and a new staff to support inclusion, and 126 of the staff that we are adding next year, 126 of the FDE, are focused on an investment in our underperforming or transformation schools. Last Wednesday, we submitted to the school committee a revised budget for your consideration. I'm now going to walk you through some of the highlighted changes that were in the updated proposal, the materials of which were posted online last week and be, can be downloaded by anyone following along online. The original district proposal included a $951,000 reserve to support lower-performing schools with declining enrollment. This reserve was first created in FY18 budget based on feedback from community members and from the school committee. As schools have moved through the budget process in the last two months, dollars from the centrally-held reserve have been allocated to specific school budgets. 10 schools received additional funding from this original reserve. The amounts were given primarily based on the size of the budget impact that they were facing, with some adjustments made by school superintendents using information from school applications and their understanding of the students' needs. This year, our focus is on making a significant investment in schools facing the largest enrollment and fiscal challenges. We're never able to really respond to every request received from individual school communities, but we made significant strides this year in raising the bar for schools regardless of enrollment. We made significant investments in our transformation schools, as I've already mentioned. We moved from a definition of sustainability to a more robust foundation for quality. And finally, this focus, by focusing our soft landings in schools facing the largest challenges, we address another issue, um, that schools were facing this year. Every year in the initial budget proposal, we have a number of additional reserves that we intend to partially liquidate throughout the budget process. That's to say that we transfer the money from the reserve budget in the budget office, central office, um, into individual school budgets for, um, issues that we're resolving throughout the process. Below is a summary of those changes, or on this slide is a summary of those changes for this year. We're still holding some reserves that will be liquidated during the summer and fall, um, as we start to understand more enrollment and assignment considerations. Across the four areas highlighted on us schools, uh, on this slide, school budgets have increased by a total of 1.5 million since the original proposal on February 5th. 53 schools have seen increase in their individual budgets since that initial proposal. There have been a number of small changes to the proposed budget for central office departments. These are more limited in scope and represent transfers between central office departments or between account types within a specific department. The only significant change in central office budget is a transfer of the funding for the Excellence for All initiative. The staff and non-personnel budget have been transferred from the Office of Opportunity Gaps to the Academics Division. OAG, the Office of Achievement Gaps, was originally asked to oversee the creation, development, and growth of EFA with the intention to move it to academics once it became part of how we do business as a system. And FY21 marks the official transfer of the initiative to the Academics Division. We'll begin the process of integrating the lessons and best practices around culturally and linguistically sustaining practices, or people refer to it CLSP, developed originally by the OAG team. And finally, I just want to share with everyone who's, um, joining us tonight that there are a lot of resources available and will continue to be available throughout the spring to understand our budget, including bostonpublicschools.org/explorebudget, which allows you to dig into central office budgets and see not only what we're spending our money on, but what initiatives and activities it's specifically geared towards. You can also view and compare school budgets so you can understand how weighted student funding and our allocation process work across all of our schools. And there's a treasure trove of information, including our detailed budget, um, document where you can go line by line if you're interested. It's a great, um, stay-at-home activity for high schoolers to really dig into, um, some, uh, complicated math problems. And then weighted student funding templates for all schools. All can be found at bostonpublicschools.org/budget. And with that, I will turn things back over to Chairman La Canto for your questions.
Thank you very much, Nate, uh, and I appreciate, um, that succinct presentation that summarized, uh, the revised budget proposal. Before we move to public comment, I want to make sure we go around and, um, see whether any other members want to, um, thank you. Uh, sorry, technical difficulty, uh, to see the screen. I want to see if any other members have further questions or comments. And I see, uh, Ms. Rivera is ready to speak, so we'll go to her first.
Sorry, I had to unmute.
Dr. Rivera, excuse me.
Oh, no problem. I just had to unmute. Sorry about that. Um, yes, so I was just wondering, um, about the foundation for quality, um, funding now that guarantees the minimum amount of funding for the schools. And I know, I understand this is something, um, like a new initiative. But what, what is going on, um, like at those particular schools that really needed that? Is it, is it the loss of, um, the students like for expansion? Or I'm just curious, it was just a few schools that, that were getting that supplemental funding? So if, what could you say in general about those schools? Thank you.
The specific issue there for those schools is that their weighted, the amount they get through weighted student funding is not enough for them to be able to pay for their core staffing and basic needs. In past years, we had, we had referred to this as a sustainability budget, which was really a very, um, limited definition of what was sort of required to be on a school budget. This year, we've expanded that definition so that they have more resources to be able to provide supplemental supports for their, um, for their students. This is separate from changes that we are funding, um, related to things like sixth grade expansion or build BPS transitions. That is another, um, source of funds and another way that we're stabilizing enrollments across schools. It's also separate from the soft landing that we provide to schools for the, the, the first 2% change in their enrollment, which is another way that we support schools, um, through enrollment. And so what can generally be said about all of these schools is that they are, um, schools that are struggling to fill, um, their classrooms, that they have experienced enrollment declines, if not this year, in past years. Um, and what we're trying to do is break that cycle of how enrollment declines leads to budget cuts, decreases in, uh, programming, and that decreases in enrollment as a result of family choice.
Okay, thank you. And I was also wondering if, um, there's, I know like, for example, with the SLIF students, there's a lot of reserve funding there to sort of adapt, right? With that population, are we thinking about this, given now the Corona situation? Whether we need to have more reserves in certain areas? And, uh, are we going to be able to have some flexibility? Even though we vote yes or no, you know, like, are we going to have that flexibility? Thank you.
Yes, I, I'll say two things. Um, we generally are holding reserves, um, for enrollment changes that we can't predict. There's only so much of our enrollment that we feel confident in projecting and funding at schools. And then we just, we need to hold back that money to be able to adapt and respond. For students with interrupted, limited or interrupted formal education or SLIF, those students in particular are very difficult to project. We've had, um, uh, some years where we've seen a decrease in that enrollment due to national or international trends. And then some years where all of a sudden we see an influx of students from a particular, um, from a particular country or region. And so we always hold a pretty healthy reserve so that we can, we can adjust to that. In general, I think we're, we're going to need to, um, revisit this budget in light of a lot of what we're learning for, um, uh, the coronavirus. And I think we will, um, the superintendent and, and her team has already started to think about, you know, are there, are there, um, are there elements of this where we should really adapt and change? And I think it could be in terms of servicing, um, students with limited or interrupted formal education, which SLIF students, which is going to grow almost by definition with, with COVID. And it could be just how do we want to adapt, um, and think about our academic investments in light of the need for rapid expansion of online learning opportunities? So we will come back, um, likely in the spring. Once things have, once we get a better lay of the land, we've been adapting rapidly to this emerging situation and be able to talk about how our budget is suited and how we are adapting our organization to be able to respond to, um, situations like this or this continued situation, depending on how, um, things trend.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. And just to add to that point, um, and for a reminder for all that are, um, viewing this, um, this meeting tonight, typically the, uh, as Mr. Cooter pointed out, the, uh, the district does hold in reserve, uh, an amount, a certain amount of money that does get liquidated to the schools over time as, uh, enrollment patterns become clear. But I think your bigger question, and it, uh, obviously extends well beyond SLIF students, is, uh, the concern about, um, what, uh, our district might look like, uh, come next year? And how that, uh, that might impact to the decisions that we're able to make with the information known at this time, uh, on our budget. And so what, um, I've discussed with the superintendent and with other members, um, individually, is that I think it might be best for us to come back probably in the fall. But, you know, perhaps sooner, uh, whenever the facts around, uh, the current situation come into clearer view to determine how, um, if any, uh, the budget allocations that are made in this current budget that we're voting on tonight, uh, might need to be, um, allocated according to the, the urgent needs of the district. So, um, so thank you again for that. Uh, I want to just go down the list here quickly. It looks like, uh, Mr. O'Neil has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, a, a question and a comment. Mr. Cooter, could you address, please, the opportunity index? And, um, just roughly, how did any changes happen on that this year? And, um, in particular, how it impacted schools? The, I'm sorry, the opportunity index, uh, you obviously know, but, uh, for, for the wider audience, the audience, the opportunity index that is used by schools to decide on partnerships, et cetera.
Yeah, so the, the opportunity index is, um, a new element, um, on the weighted student funding template. And I say new, it's, I think we're in the third year of using, um, the opportunity index to allocate out partnership funding and additional supplemental supports for students. The information around schools' weighted, um, opportunity index scores and how much money they received as a result of that opportunity index will be posted tonight online to the school committee questions that you submitted. There will be a memo that is, uh, posted for people to answer. There were no technical changes to the opportunity index this year compared to last year. So the formula itself, the different elements that we pull in around students, and that ranges from neighborhood characteristics, um, academic, um, uh, demographic information for the students, and then, um, some, uh, things like neighborhood crime data. Though all of those elements are consistent from year to year, from FY20 to FY21. And so the fluctuations that you see in any given school in their opportunity index score is a result of changes, um, to their student enrollment, um, to the students who are in their school. And, um, typically, if there is a school that, um, qualified for soft landings, or excuse me, who qualified for opportunity index funding that is now, um, loses those concentration, the partnership funds, we will then soft land that, um, as well. So that's listed on our soft landings page on our supplemental allocations as well.
Thank you, Mr. Cooter. And Mr. Chair, since you were mentioning, and I do agree with you quite frankly, the landscape come the fall may be quite different from what we're facing right now. So I appreciate the budget that's been put in front of us. But I know many members of the public are also wondering, will stimulus funds make a difference? You asked me to continually update you and other members on guidance yet from the council. So, uh, we did just receive a guidance from them about the bill that is being, uh, discussed at the Senate and House literally this afternoon. And the, uh, what we expect is going to be voted on will include an economic stabilization fund of $30 billion, of which 13 billion is provided for K-12 education. That will be allocated first to states and then ultimately to school districts based on the Title I funding formula. The K-12 funds can be used for any allowable purpose authorized under ESEA, IDEA, Perkins, or, or McKinney-Vento homeless authorities, as well as for preparation response, et cetera. So there should So there should be some funding coming to us. However, districts will also be required to continue to pay employees and contractors to the greatest extent practical. And equitable services continue to be required for private school students and teachers. And states are required to maintain their support as well. So there's a lot to figure out how this works out and will ultimately impact us. I anticipate, Mr. Cooter, you and your team are keeping close eyes on it, but it's just way too early to tell what the impact will be for us.
That's absolutely right. I would just say, we, we have really benefited from a great partnership with our city partners, the Office of Budget Management, Justin Starett, the City Budget Director, Maureen Joyce, the City Auditor. They've all been working very closely with us to help us manage the, the costs and understand the cost. And that's something that we will be tracking very closely, as the superintendent mentioned in her opening remark.
Yeah, well, I will also say districts across the country are struggling with what their budgets are right now and how to put a budget together for a vote when there's absolutely no sense of what's going to happen on federal, state, or even for independent districts out of their own taxing authority. It's going to be very, very uncertain times. So we appreciate the work that you're doing right now and know that some of this may be subject to change.
Thank you for noting that work that you've been doing, Mr. Cooter, with the city's budget team and finance team. And thank you, Mr. O'Neal, as always, for updating the committee and myself, as well as the public at large, about the work that you're doing with the council-grade city schools. I do want to thank you as well for the model letter that was provided from the council in the last few days that the city and the district and the committee have jointly sent along to our delegation in the House and Senate in support of increased expenditures to support our schools during this time. So we'll move on now to Ms., Ms. Robinson, who has a question.
All right, thank you. Again, thank you so much for all of the work that you've been doing on the budget. And especially, thank you for making sure that the changes that have been made for schools have been made. So one of my questions is, besides what we see tonight of new monies going back into school, are there still schools who have sort of fallen through the cracks? They, they, they didn't have enough needs so that they got money, but they still are feeling that they have, there's something within their budget they still are not able to fund through what they're being given this year? And how are we helping those schools think through those needs?
Yeah, I would, I would say, I don't think that at this point that there's any schools that have fallen through the cracks. I think we have reviewed every school budget. There's been multiple steps in the process. The first thing we do is work with schools on their projections in early November. That's our first really sign of schools that we face in difficulty in the budget process. In December, we work with schools to help them shape their budget. Then once they submit it in November, we meet with every single school on what we call a budget collaborative meeting, which is a team of central office folks, including human capital, special education, English learners, our team, to meet and discuss and talk about the budget. And then once we finalize that, and that's what gets sent to you on February 5th, we invite schools to submit an application for additional funding so that we can review what we, what we missed or what qualitative information they want to provide. We're working with our school superintendents to really understand the context, recognizing that my, you know, from where I said, I can't know the context of every school. At the end of this, there are always school communities that want to do more. I think there's always great things that people could do with more resources. There's always the next initiative or the next program that they want to add to their school. And then at some point, we are not able to fund all those. I think this budget represents the, the most comprehensive investment in schools outside of enrollment since we've moved to WSF, which means that we're providing so many different venues and supports to schools that it's not just straightforward, your enrollment's down and you're left to deal with it. And we're taking a lot of the information that we've received from schools, particularly our high schools, and we're looking at, what does that mean for our proposals in FY22 and FY23 as we start to expand? And think about that three-year budget and investment in new resources. And, you know, there's a lot of things that we're hearing. I've had the opportunity to meet with a number of students on what they would like to see at their schools. And I think there's going to be a lot more conversations around those investments. So I don't think we're done. I don't think we're, you know, part of the recognition of this three-year, $100 million investment with the, with the mayor coming in and saying, this is where we want to go with our district and this is the investment that we want to make.
Yes, because I agree with what everyone has been saying that, you know, this period of time, we are certainly learning a lot. And I'm hoping also that it will give us an opportunity to learn from what's going on now, to understand what other kinds of investments we might need to make in schools that really we weren't on the docket until this experience that we're all going through right now. My other question is about EFA. Happy to hear that it's being integrated into the overall curriculum, the schools. At some point, will there be a presentation to give us a wrap-up of how the experiment has gone? What, what are the lessons learned and how we're going to fully integrate EFA into the district overall?
Yeah, I think that would be a good suggestion to put on the calendar, especially when we talk about academics. I know that we had academics presenting coming up. And I know we've had to shift some of the presentations due to this current situation. And so, but definitely we'll have that as part of that conversation.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Superintendent. Thank you for your questions, Ms. Robinson. We'll move on to our student representative, Ms. Evelyn Reyes, with a question. And just to get everybody else prepared, we're going to move then to public comment. Ms. Reyes.
Thank you. So I have, I have a question about process. And it might come in multiple parts, but, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I want to understand better how this works. When we, or when the district starts building its budget before February 5th, is it that the city says, this is what we think we can give you for the year? And then the district looks at how we can allocate it? Or is it done some other way?
That's an awesome question. So our work with the city and our initial budget actually begins in August, when we put together our first forecast of future year costs. And so what we do every August is submit to them what we think our costs are going to be. That is, by and large, a exercise in financial projections. There's not a lot of detailed review. We do most of it formulaic, based on trends and spending, based on the cost and structure of our collective bargaining. Then in early October, we begin our enrollment projection process, which is really the biggest input. That tells us how many students and what sort of need we need to prepare for. And we, at that point, we are working very closely with our partners in the city to understand costs, to review it. They provide a lot of important information to us around things like utility costs and other things that we're seeing in the city that they learn from their other departments. And that's what we have referred to in the budget, the $44 million of what we call level service costs or maintenance costs. That's the part that is just the cost of us doing business, doing the same thing. Of course, with Superintendent Casselli, she started also at the same time with a very robust community engagement process, and, which was the, really the starting point for us to do some internal planning and discussions around what, what would we like to see in terms of investments? And what would we like to see in terms of changes to the budget for next year? And that's the conversation we start having with the city and having a sort of robust conversation around where we want to go. That's a question then that does become a question of what can the city afford? We're very lucky that the city has such strong finances, particularly as we head into a period of uncertainty. The work that they've done to, to create a AAA bond rating, which us finance nerds can really focus on, but is really what it means for us is during periods of instability, we have stability as a school district. And Mr. O'Neal mentioned already, some of our partners in other cities that are independent school districts and have to deal with their own taxing, or in smaller cities or cities without as strong finances, they're sitting in a lot more panic situation than I am. I, I'm able to rely very heavily on our partners over there. So that's the part that comes together. And then when we, we're then working with schools to understand their needs, it is a sort of constant back and forth in a conversation until we finally present our budget February 5th. Once you as a body vote on it, our budget then moves forward. And then the mayor in two weeks, the second Wednesday in April, will present his budget to the city council. And that begins another public conversation around our budget, the city budget overall in the context of spending. And so, you know, of course, that's another opportunity for people to be engaged and to give their feedback on both our budget and the city budget as a whole. That was a long answer to a short question, but a really good one.
Okay, um, thank you. And so I'm wondering then if, does the district have a way? Or does the district come up with a budget that's sort of like, if we fully, like this, this is what we need if we had, need everything to be covered so that we're not like, so that no person is left feeling like, what's the word I'm looking for? What I'm trying to say is, I think it would be interesting if the district were able to come up with a budget that was like, here is what the budget would look like if, excuse me, if everything was fully funded and nothing had to go through cuts? And just to sort of hold that up to the many versions that we see throughout the year? Just to see where we're taking hits and what, what places need more support or could use more support?
Yeah, it's, it's a really interesting question and one that's surprisingly difficult to do just because it has to start with a, a common definition of, of what everyone wants and what we would do if we had sort of unlimited resources. We do go through an exercise of, of when we project enrollment, we know what the cost would have been had we not changed our enrollment. And because of the documents online, somebody could take our district weighted student funding template and calculate how much they, it would cost us if we didn't change enrollment at all. From both a practical perspective and sort of my philosophical underpinning, I don't think we should be thinking about funding schools without considering the change in students. There is a technical and practical benefit to us starting our budget process with the enrollment projections, because it's, it sort of asks everyone in the process to say, who are the kids you're going to serve? What are their needs? And then how do you need to configure your school to serve those kids? And that can feel like budget cuts in some years, but it also forces schools to stop and think, has my student demographic, has my student population changed so that, and, and am I still serving them in the best way possible? Before weighted student funding, and even in the early years of weighted student funding, you saw schools try and just maintain their same level of funding, the same staffing. But they weren't adapting to the needs of their kids. They weren't looking at the high schoolers that were in front of them and saying, what are the classes that they need and how do I get those classes for them? How do I adapt my curriculum to the emerging needs? We've had significant changes in the number and needs of special education students in this district. We've had significant shifts in the understanding and needs of our English learners over the last five to 10 years. And so all of those things require us every year to sort of reconfigure and make changes. And so some of what we hear from school communities is, I got a budget cut. Or the, the parents experience it, students experience it as a budget cut because that teacher is no longer here. But really what it is, is that it's the offshoot of us really starting the question of, who are the students we have? What do we need to serve them? And how do we best use that resource? And I don't think just holding everyone to a minimum and not making change year to year, not ever adjusting school budgets would best serve our students in any way.
Evelyn, share with me again what, what you're really, what's really your concern? Like, what are you, what are you thinking about in terms of your question?
I suppose it was, well, part of it is about my own sort of understanding of how we get to this point. And then I think the other, the other part of it is thinking about how we can sort of have like a, how we can think about what it would look like if no place really had to experience a cut, but if it was more. The idea of what the district would look like fully funded and where no one really has to think about complaining about getting a cut in any way, shape, or form, and where every student is getting what they need without feeling like they're missing things or like the budget is underserving them in any way. And just sort of holding up that model next to the, the budget that we end up with every year. I'm just, I'm thinking about what that might look like.
Yeah, I think that what you're, what I, what I hear you saying is like, so that kids get what they need, right? So that they don't lack counselors or they don't lack the support that they need in school for a nurse, for instance. And just because enrollment fluctuates up and down or the circumstances go this way or the other way. And so we try to, we try to build that in to, to the budgets as best that we can and, and try to make sure that we can hit those needs that students have. And I think that with this budget, we were able to do it a little bit better than other years, but creating an ideal situation. And, and what is the high quality pieces, like a high quality guarantee? And I know that Nate and his team have started on this kind of quality guarantee that we're trying to reach and what that is. So we've been working with the community to define that. And I'd be interested in hearing the youth's idea of what those components are. I know that as I went around, they were talking about, you know, having co-curricular activities or having supports for mental health. So we tried to build in some extra social workers for that. We have a nurse in every building now because that was already a priority of the district. So just kind of understanding what are those ideal pieces that make for a high quality, that it really shouldn't matter. It shouldn't matter that, and every kid should have it.
Right, yeah. Okay, well, I'm, thank you for your answer, Nate.
And that's it, Ms. Reyes?
Um, yeah, that's all.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll return to you and to all the other members when we get to the, the meeting later on. But now it's time for public comment. And I want to thank once again our friends in IT at the district for ensuring that we were able to take public comment online through this mode this evening. We weren't sure that we're, we were going to be able to do so. And we've been collecting both video as well as audio and written feedback from the community all week. And we'll be able to make that publicly available at a, at a later date. But for now, we're going to follow our regular process. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sullivan to, to lead us in public comment. So Ms. Sullivan, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Public comment period. Public comment period, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have 27 speakers this evening, so time will be reduced to two minutes per person. Speakers may not resign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or select a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. This evening, who are not signed in under their name, they're signed into Zoom under a number, which is making it hard for us to identify you. So if, when you hear your name, if you could just virtually raise your hand using Zoom, that would help us move things along and let us know that you are with us. So we'll begin this evening with Counselor Anisa Asabi George. And she will be followed by Kamani James, Mike Heishman, and Wendy Lamb. Counselor George.
All right, here I am. I think that you can, oh, you can see me, but with my other picture. Good evening, everyone. I am really looking. Good evening, everyone. I am really looking forward to getting back to what might be a normal process for this budget in the coming weeks. And it'll be interesting to see how we go through our process at the city council. Before I speak to the budget, I just want to thank the superintendent Casilius and all members of your team and of the school committee for their efforts over this last week and a half in particular, making sure that our kids are getting the things that they need. In particular, I know a great effort has gone into both food delivery this last week and a half and Chromebook delivery. So thank you for all of that. I have received a number of concerns regarding the impacts on schools directly. And I think Ms. Reyes really hit the, the nail on the head when she spoke to some of the sort of foundational or baseline needs that our schools are looking forward, uh, looking forward to. In particular, I've heard concerns regarding some cutting of librarian services in our schools, science specialists in our schools, certainly behavioral health specialists, which is really important to me personally and professionally. And I know through some of this, the new efforts, we're going to see an increase in social workers across our district and, and in concentrated efforts in some places. So I'm, I'm happy about that, but am concerned about a few schools that are perhaps losing some of those specialists, which would also include some of our inclusion supports. In particular, I heard from Excel High School regarding their restorative justice program in, in some of the, the, I think the total elimination, it seems of that program there. So, you know, this continues, I know, to be a work in progress, especially as it comes to the city council. And I look forward to, um, look forward to that process in the coming weeks. Thank you, everyone.
Well, thank you, counselor. And thank you also for continuing to amplify all the, the efforts of the district to reach out to our community on food, on Chromebooks, on all the efforts that we've been ma- making to, to ensure that any interruption to academics is minimized as much as possible. And we appreciate your help there. Sullivan.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kamani James. And he'll be followed by Michael Heishman, Wendy Lamb and Michelle Kane. Is Mr. James with us?
Hello, this is Kamani James.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Kamani James and I am a junior at Boston Line Academy and a member of the Boston Student Advisory Council and Youth on Board. I've been a student in BPS for over 10 years, so I know firsthand what students and teachers have to go through when they aren't provided with the resources they need to thrive in the classroom. Over the past several years, the governor and state of Massachusetts have failed to adequately raise the budget for BPS and struggling schools, which is why BSAC fought for and passed the Student Opportunity Act, even though students will only be seeing modest increases over the next seven years. And while the mayor has gracefully increased the BPS budget by nearly a hundred million dollars over the next three years, many of our schools face budget cuts in tonight's proposed budget. With the vote on BPS's FY21 budget here, it is important to take into consideration the destructive crippling consequences that will result from various budget cuts across the district. I and many other students have lost incredible teachers as a result of budget cuts. Teachers who not only execute pedagogy in the most effective manner, but also those who have developed personal meaningful bonds with their students. We want our students to go to college and be successful, yet we deprive them of crucial resources needed to help them achieve their goals. Quite frankly, it's disappointing. The state must put more money into our schools and the city must start giving us the resources we ask for rather than what they believe we need, especially during such a critical time period. As you all know, we're going through a pandemic that is dramatically changing the way we live. So much it has impacted our schools greatly. It's even shed light on many of the resources and programs that BPS lacks. Why is it that teachers didn't already have the resources they needed to be up to date with 21st century learning? Why is it that students were already given tools to navigate different online portals? So they too can be up to date with 21st century learning. This bears the question, why hasn't the largest school district in the state with so many students and future leaders been given the resources we need to truly succeed and thrive? I understand that these budget cuts are a result of under enrollment. That being said, maybe if the city put a halt to gentrifying low income neighborhoods, our African American and Latinx community could afford to both stay in their communities and keep their kids enrolled in their schools. Additionally, students are scheduled to miss weeks of school, potentially the rest of the school year because of the recent pandemic. After teachers and students have been out of school for weeks and have struggled to transition to online learning with few resources, are you truly comfortable with sending them back to school next year without their favorite math teacher or guidance counselor? In this time of uncertainty, you all have the power to take a stand and tell the city that no student should have to come back to BPS next year after months off from school and face budget cuts. We need stability and support. And right now you all have the power to not only provide it, but thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Michael Heishman, followed by Wendy Lamb, Michelle Kane and Tracy Curtin. Mr. Heishman? I know he's with us. Mr. Heishman?
Can you see me? Oh.
I see your name and I can hear you.
Thank you, thank you. I, I first want to thank Lena and Liz for all they've done to get me online. Thank you very much. I also pray, I want to praise the last speaker for his clarity. I've sent in my testimony. I know I have less than two minutes now, so I'll be brief. I've been an educator since 1969. For me, every child is not somebody else's child. Every child on planet earth is my child. It's unacceptable to me that any of my children be harmed. I speak in opposition to this proposed budget. There's just not enough funds. Evelyn Reyes asked a wonderful question and it should be where the budget, budget process begins. What would the budget look like if we were able to satisfy every, and fulfill every child's needs? And that would mean for me that every school would have a foundation budget, every school would have what it, what every school would need. And also every school would have extras to fulfill its mission and vision. What we need today in front of us is a budget that fulfills our superintendent's, superintendent's vision and mission. But we don't have that today. This proposed budget will not provide, provide sufficient resources that every child in the Boston Public Schools need and deserve. This proposal, yes, is better, is not as bad as past budgets, but still, as we have heard, our, some of our children are going to be hurt, harmed. I also want to say, because I only have a short time left, I send a, a response to the proposed receivership by the Department of D E S E. Against this shotgun marriage, how dare the state come in and impose this upon us? The state is not, if, if the state is part of the problem, it's not, hasn't been part of the solution. It's given us very, very little funds. And I believe, I strongly encourage that this proposal, this agreement be ripped up right now and to be tabled into sometime in the future after this pandemic is behind us. Thank you very much. And thank you for all that everybody has been doing.
Thank you, Mr. Heishman. Next we'll hear from Wendy Lamb, followed by Michelle Kane, Tracy Curtin and Deb Shay. Is Ms. Lamb with us?
Hello.
Tracy?
Hello. Oh, hello, okay.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Wendy Lamb and I'm an ESL teacher at Excel High School. First, I want to thank Superintendent Casilius and the school committee members and others who are involved for making the decision of giving Excel High School some soft landing money to reinstate some positions. However, it is still not enough. At Excel, we do many great things day in and day out. I want to stress that we serve a very, very high needs population. We continue to push students to achieve their best despite facing many adversities. Losing a teacher, a counselor, a librarian should not be one of them. Students see us as humans first. Losing that connection has a great impact on students' social and emotional wellbeing. Losing a person that you look up to as a role model has a greater impact. Our Black and Brown students need more role models who reflect who they are. We continue to push to hire more people of color because that is a better representation of the BPS student population. Hakeem Johnson is precisely the type of educator that BPS ought to be grateful to have in our schools. We should be fighting to keep him. He's a BPS graduate. In fact, he is an alumnus of the very school he works at now, Excel, formerly South Boston High School. He's a beloved guidance counselor and a wonderful basketball coach. As a Black man, many of our students are able to connect with him. They share their stories and experiences with him. He encourages our students to push, to push themselves harder and instills within them the belief that they are capable of greatness. Every day he encounter, he counters the disheartening messages our students receive. I will never forget that moment when Mr. Johnson pulled a student aside off the court to tell him what he needed to work on, like a father teaching his son. That simple interaction made a lasting impact on me because I can see that student will one day be in Mr. Johnson's shoes, coaching students to succeed on and off the courts. Mr. Johnson is just one of many, many special people being cut. I'm afraid to know what next year will hold without the presence of all those people. I'm sitting here asking you all to give back the very foundation that holds our school to please reconsider again reinstating all the positions that have been cut at Excel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb. Next we'll hear from Michelle Kane, followed by Tracy Curtin and Deb Shay. Ms. Kane?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Kane and I am a science teacher at Excel High School. I would first like to start by applauding the insightful questions of Evelyn Reyes and the striking assessment of Boston Equities by Kamani Jones earlier. James, excuse me, earlier. Earlier today, I heard that the guiding vision behind the FY21 budget is that every child in every classroom in every school of the Boston Public School System has the same opportunities to achieve greatness within them as anybody else. I wonder, how can it be argued that Excel students have the same opportunity as other students to achieve greatness when they don't have potable water? When many of our Chromebooks do not work? When our ceilings crumble to the floor and whiteboards peel from the walls? When radiators cause second degree burns to the, to the touch and are deafeningly loud? When science classrooms do not have working sinks, gas lines or fume hoods? When guidance counselors, librarians and teachers are taken away? I'm honestly stunned by the revised budget presentation. Before moving to Boston, I thought that BPS was a beacon of public education. After teaching in this district for the past four years, it is so clear to me that some schools and students are granted incredible opportunities while others like Excel are not. This is an astounding failure on the part of the state and the city. It has been incredibly disheartening experience teaching here. For the past several years, our students have been ignored and shunted aside by this district. This must end. Our students already face immense challenges in their lives outside school. At the very least, the injustices that are rampant in our society should not be perpetuated in their schooling. This current circumstance is wrong and misguided. It was stated earlier that, quote, "No schools have fallen through the cracks in this budget formulation." I could not disagree more strongly. I could go on, but in my remaining time, I want to raise up the voices of our Excel students. Their vision, their experience and their perspective are far more valuable than mine. They deserve to be seen and they deserve to be heard. My colleague Wendy Lamb, who just spoke, shared a video with the school committee so that you can watch outside of the meeting time. I have compelling and important stories to tell and I truly hope you hear them and take them seriously. The students of Excel are important and it is high time they are treated as such. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. And if everyone could just continue raising your hand as you hear me call your name, so we know you're with us, that would be extremely helpful. Thank you for doing that. Next we'll hear from Tracy Curtin, followed by Deb Shay, Jeremiah Hilton and the Gallard family. Is Ms. Curtin with us? Tracy Curtin?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, school committee members. Thank you so much for taking the time to hear our school's letter. I'm from the P A Shaw School. During this chaotic time, we're seeing the inequities within our community boldly highlighted. The resource gaps are increasingly clear as families decide between childcare and a paycheck, between reducing health risk and paying rent. As the situation will almost surely become more dire for many families within our school communities, we ask you to look with a more scrutinizing eye on the budget proposal you have laid out for the P A Shaw for school year 2021. We at the P A Shaw School Community, including educators, families and students, are facing our second year of significant budget cuts. These budget cuts are clearly reflective of the declining enrollment of our school that began in school year 1718. In the spring of 2018, BPS announced that contrary to what was previously told to families, the P A Shaw would end at grade three. This meant that all of the families who had students in the third grade had to rush to find a school placement for their child or to accept their fourth grade seat at the Mildred Ave School. This not only disempowered families, but it was the catalyst for a near 20% decline in enrollment in only two years. In school year 1819, we had 204 students, then in 1920, 174 students. And in school year 2021, we're projected to have 168. Educators at the P A Shaw hear stories constantly from families who feel forced to leave our school. Families who have a child in the third grade and a child in kindergarten, for example, feel forced to move both children to a different school in order to avoid juggling two, two school locations, two drop offs and two pickup times. Families with third grade students feel they are forced to accept seats at charter schools for the following year in October for fear of losing this opportunity later on in the school year. We at the P A Shaw fear that we are facing a silent phase out of our school as we continue to see our enrollment decline and our funding diminish with each school year. We fear that significant decisions will continue to be made for us instead of with us. For school year 2021, we faced a difficult decision between maintaining a reading specialist and keeping science for our students. This is not a choice that all schools need to make. Much too often, it's our highest need schools serving some of our most vulnerable populations, as Excel has talked about tonight, that need to make these difficult choices. As a result, the students at the Shaw are slated to no longer have science as a special next year. We ask that we receive additional funding in our budget in order to maintain this 0.5 FTE position for 2021. We are writing this letter to the school committee to voice that Mattapan needs great schools, including not just a surviving, but a thriving P A Shaw. This is not a one school issue.
Ms. Curtin?
The Boston Public Schools equity issue. We've worked tirelessly throughout the lifetime of our school to provide not just excellent instructional support, but loving, responsive, social, emotional support for whole children and whole families. To continue to sit back while our enrollment decreases and our funding decreases is to watch this love-filled, excellence-driven school slowly wither. We ask you to turn our, your attention to our school. We will continue to speak up to make sure that the school community we love continues to thrive for our families and our entire staff. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Curtin. Next we'll hear from Deb Shay. She'll be followed by Jeremiah Hilton, the Gallard family and Sharika Rhodes. Is Ms. Shay with us? Deb Shay? Okay, Jeremiah Hilton? Mr. Hilton?
Hi. Hello?
Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jeremiah's mother. Jeremiah just joined us. So first off, I wanted to, I did write a letter myself. So I wanted to share it. I want to start off by mentioning that the P A elementary school is a prime example of why you shouldn't judge a book by its cover. Despite being an intercity school that consists of grade levels, kindergarten through third grade, it tremendously demonstrates leadership, integrity and dedication. I have observed Ms. Davis, the principal, as well as other staff acknowledge every single student from the moment they walk in the building and from the time they leave. Her strategy of playing inspirational music in the morning to motivate the children before their day begins is amazing. You can see the smiles on their face as they head to class that they are ready to learn. It's the small things done often that make a big difference. The school has also held many events involving students and parents that focus on what your child is learning, which ensures us that our children's education is being taken seriously. Wanting to send my kids being a part of that is a great feeling. I believe in the phrase, "Action speaks louder than words." The actions of these educators prove that they have the best interest for your child. There are many great things I can say about the P A Shaw School, however, a concern I have is that the students are rejected after third grade. Now imagine sending your school, your child to a school where he or she has built a relationship with the principal, staff and developed friendships for quite some time. Perhaps that child has been attending the school since kindergarten and is now approaching their last year as a third grader, losing their relationship with the school that they have grown with. Another example would be parents who have two or more children, like myself, that share the same school and love the school like the Shaw, but will have to find another school to place their children in because having your kids in different schools is stressful and inconvenient. I also feel that to send my kids to different schools would make me feel like there's a possibility that one of my children won't get the same learning experience as the other. Having a school where educators and staff are eager to, I'm sorry, are eager to learn is, I take away from a school that is looking for solutions and focusing on making their students a top priority. Every parent should be able to say that their child goes to a great school no matter what city they live in. Mattapan is a city that has a number of low-income families. Most parents that would love to send their child to a school where they know the education is meaningful. Unfortunately, that's not easy when a household doesn't make enough money to send their child to a good school or waiting lists are filled. Parents who send their children to public school should know that and trust their children will receive the same high level of resources and education that they would receive at a charter school. I already said that actions speak louder than words. I would love to see funding given back to the Shaw and other Boston Public Schools that shows the actions that my children will get this education they deserve and education that shows them that they and we matter. I have, I would like to speak a few words as well.
I already described my school as a fun school. One reason I love my school is because I have a cool teacher who makes learning fun. For example, my teacher, Ms. Curtin, has my classmates, and I play one of my favorite games called Pop. That math that teaches us math skills like skip counting. Another reason is the principal, Ms. Davis, is kind and helpful. Every day, she greets us in person and speaks on the intercom to remind us how special we are. If you came to our school, you would see that we are family because family helps each other. It isn't fair to take resources away from our school because me, because my friends and I want to be great achievers. So I think you should consider us as little caterpillars, caterpillars who are hungry for learning because we want to grow into beautiful, educated butterflies.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Ms. Sullivan, while you're moving on to call the next speaker, I just want to remind folks that because of the great amount of folks that are lining up to speak this evening, we do have a two-minute time limit on each speaker. This isn't the normal process, obviously, doing this meeting over online. So it's not as easy for us to let folks know when their time is up, but if you could listen for Ms. Sullivan, she will let you know when you have 20 to 30 seconds remaining, and then when your time is up, you'll hear a buzz. So please try to stick to that and be considerate of your fellow speakers. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from the Gallard family, followed by Sharika Rhodes, Kadrinette Kamani, and Kanice, students from the Shaw. The Gallard family with us? No? Okay. Sharika Rhodes? Ms. Rhodes? Kadrinette Kamani and Kanice? Ayana Hilton? Is Ms. Hilton with us? And after that, we'll hear from Gillian Mead and Flavia Santos. If you could raise your hands, please.
Ms. Sullivan, I believe we just heard from Ayana Hilton, who was Jeremiah's mother.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, sorry, she was in here twice. Sorry. So Gillian Mead, Flavia Santos, and Brian Laboue, if you could raise your hands. And we'll begin with Ms. Mead.
Hello?
Hi, I can hear you.
Hello, welcome.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Casellius and the school committee. My name is Gillian Mead, and I am a teacher from Succeed Boston at the Counseling and Intervention Center of BPS. I'm speaking on behalf of the entire staff at Succeed Boston, the students, families, and community partners who have voiced their support for us. For the last 33 years, Succeed Boston has provided intensive support to 35,000 students who are suspended after a serious infraction of the Code of Conduct. Research shows that unsupported out-of-school suspension leads to feelings of disconnectedness, shame, and hopelessness that work to feed the school-to-prison pipeline. Succeed Boston interrupts this cycle by providing a safe therapeutic place for students to receive academic instruction, social-emotional learning, substance use intervention, as well as individual crisis counseling, so that when these students return to school, they can be ready to learn and make positive progress. In addition to these services we provide to more than 600 students each year, we also operate the Safe Space and Bullying Prevention Hotline 24/7, manage all the bullying investigation intervention in the district, and train all specialists. In partnership with the Office of Equity, we provide an educational Saturday program for students who engage in bias-based behaviors and support schools dealing with these incidents. Succeed Boston leads the district's work in assertive justice with the implementation of the NIJ grant to roll out RJ in 29 schools. And we also provide a mechanism at the district level to assure equitable discipline practices by educating students and families about their due process rights. We do all of this with a staff of 10 people, eight of whom just received notice that their positions are excess for next year and the future of the program is uncertain. We know that we are currently living in an uncertain moment in history, and that everyone in the BPS community is struggling in this new reality. We come today because we did not want to miss an opportunity to voice our serious concerns over the step backward the district would take if our program is eliminated. We believe that our services are essential to BPS, and there are many students and families and community partners ready to tell you the same. However, we did not ask them to speak today because of this global pandemic. For now, we want to make sure that you are aware of our program, understand the extent to which we serve and impact the BPS community, and take time to thoughtfully work with us through a lens of equity to determine the direction of the district and the plan for our students who are most vulnerable in the school-to-prison pipeline. Thank you for your time, and we hope to discuss this further when we, as a community, have our feet under us again.
Thank you, Ms. Mead. Next, we'll hear from Flavia Santos, Brian Laboue, Jeff Timberlake, and Heidi Winston. If you could all please raise your hand on Zoom, and we'll begin with Ms. Santos. Flavia Santos? Okay. Brian Laboue? Mr. Laboue?
Can you hear me? This is Flavia. I'm here.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Casellius, Chairman Luccanto, and the school committee members. My name is Flavia Santos, and I have been part of the BPS School District for the last eight years. Since 2016, I have been the Program Manager for Succeed Boston at the Counseling and Intervention Center. These are troubling and unsettling times that we're all experiencing globally. Like many citizens in this country, I am affected by this coronavirus pandemic on a personal level as I was born and raised in another country, Brazil. It truly saddens me and worries me to see what is happening in Italy, China, Iran, and many other countries, including my home country, which is also in a lockdown situation. At this present moment in our history, I, along with many others, can't go home to visit my family if I needed to. If I go home, I may not be able to come back so soon for my own family. I also can't risk my mother's and my sister's health and ask them to come visit me so that we could be close to each other. The health of our planet, family members, friends, and our students and their families are not the only things I'm concerned about. I'm also concerned about the future of our economy that has been very volatile, and consequently, I worry about our jobs. So with that being said, today, I wanted to write to the school committee to express my concern with the hiring timeline of school districts, including Boston Public Schools. It is my understanding that although our country is collectively on a lockdown mode, our school district continues with its hiring procedures. Several teachers and staff were informed that their contract will not be renewed next school year, and I see that many jobs are being posted online. As many experts have described, this is an unprecedented time in our history, and as much as I hope this to end sooner than later, it worries me that professionals in many areas of work within BPS will not be able to find will not be able to complete a full review process where we work our lessons. Additionally, will not be able to visit new schools and teams in order for our make more informed decisions. With this in mind, I would like to urge the school committee to think about the hiring timeline and how this will affect hundreds of employees in BPS and our families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. Next, we'll hear from Brian Laboue, followed by Jeff Timberlake, Heidi Winston, and Sarah Edrisu. Mr. Laboue with us? Okay. Jeff Timberlake? Mr. Timberlake?
Hello?
Oh, Brian. Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm sorry. Thank you so much for helping me get connected, by the way.
Sure, you're welcome.
And thank you, everyone, for taking a few moments to listen to me. I am a 15-plus-year inclusion teacher here in Boston. I have two young boys, a third grader and a fourth grader, that hold inclusion seats in Boston, one at the Everett and another at the Lee Academy Pilot School. Tonight, I'm here to talk more about the Lee Academy and in general, to support Inclusion Done Right. I am urging the city to please consider maintaining the Lee Academy's current .5 cost allocation for the year 2021, and also to fund our .6 behavior specialist. We are a school that is not going to have lower enrollment. We retain our staff. And unfortunately, this year, we're unable to switch to an average-year salary. Because of this, we're going to be losing those two vital positions, positions that align with Inclusion Done Right. To eliminate them would be taking steps back instead of steps forward. And as a parent, I just wonder, taking off the teacher hat and putting on the parent hat, I just, I wonder what we're doing as a city and how we can continue to fail our kids by sending them into inclusion classrooms that are not given the proper resources. And when I talk about resources, I'm talking about bodies. I'm talking about people that are qualified, that are highly trained, that collaborate with their with their colleagues, that are great at building relationships with students and families. And what's happening at the Lee Academy next year is we're going to lose two people that check all those boxes. We're going to lose two people that service some of our highest-need students. And to me, it's unacceptable. They're vital members of our community. It's going to have a huge impact on our school's ability to provide the services our kids need. I I think about also, as a parent, what we want when we send our kids to school. We want them to be safe. We want them to be heard as people and be able to grow as who they are. We want them to get a great education. And what 200 students are going to lose is two people that check those boxes off. I have to urge you again to leave no rock unturned to find the money to maintain these positions. I can't imagine that we can't find it. I love Boston. I've been in Boston my whole life. I've been a teacher, like I said, for almost 20 years in Boston, and I'm talking specifically for the school, the Lee Academy, but all schools in Boston. We can't let our families down. And to me, if he loses those positions, that's an example of letting our city, our teachers, our students, our families, our principals down. I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Laboue.
From my heart, and I wish everyone the best. Please be safe.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next up, we're going to hear from Jeff Timberlake, followed by Heidi Winston, Sarah Edrisu, and Gabriella Chow. If you could all raise your hands on Zoom, so we know you're with us. And we're going to begin with Mr. Timberlake.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jeff Timberlake. I am currently a reading recovery ESL teacher at the Curtis Kyle of East Boston. I want to thank the Boston Public School Committee and Superintendent Casellius for allowing me the time to speak. I'm talking today on the necessity of securing the position of the reading recovery teacher leader next year. Currently, there are 31 reading recovery teachers across 26 Boston Public Schools. Eliminating the reading recovery teacher leader would in turn terminate the amazing teaching and learning across these 26 schools. Amazing, yes. Over the past seven years, 73% of BPS reading recovery students read above first-grade level at the end of the year, starting out in the lowest 20% of their class. Amazing, yes. Students come in writing between five to 12 words and leave the program able to write between 30 and 52 words independently. How does this happen? Because the work of the reading recovery teacher is supported by a teacher leader who facilitates teacher growth and development in the following ways. One-to-one, next to the teacher, observing lessons, providing teacher feedback within 24 hours. At professional learning sessions, six to be exact, where colleagues spend three hours each month in academic discourse facilitated by the teacher leader. At our schools, where reading recovery teacher leaders, where the reading recovery teacher leader partners with reading recovery teachers to collaborate with school teams and school leadership. I'd like to close by saying, please go to readingrecovery.org, learn about our important work with first-grade students and the accelerated growth of our reading recovery students, all tied to the role of the teacher leader. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake. Next, we'll hear from Heidi Winston, followed by Sarah Edrisu, Gabriella Chu, and Adead Abiyoye. Ms. Winston with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm the school nurse at the BTU Pilot School. And, well, let me just start. Boston Public School nurses won the demand for a full-time nurse in every school. School nurses also continue to support the demands for more school psychologists and social workers. This is important because according to the Centers for Disease Control, the suicide rate among children ages 10 to 17 increased by 70% between 2006, that's my cap, and 2016. Today's schoolchildren are experiencing record levels of depression, anxiety, and trauma. A 2019 nationwide report by the ACLU for the Department of Education entitled "Cops and No Counselors" states, "The lack of mental health staff in schools is harming students." Furthermore, it also states that schools with more nurses and mental health support create environments that are safe and supportive and foster learning. Data show that school staff who provide health and mental health services to our children improve not only health outcomes, but also school safety. However, there is no evidence that police in schools improve school safety. Indeed, in many cases, they are causing harm. Across the U.S., there are 14 million students in schools with police, but no counselors, nurses, or school psychologists. Although BPS has better support services than that, our students' needs are still underserved. In addition, students are often faced with the negative consequences of interactions with the school police. What's more, on January 6, 2020, news broke that the Boston Public School Police had shared over 130 BPS students' information with ICE, jeopardizing these young people's futures. There is as yet no clear and consistent BPS policy limiting such sharing of BPS students' information with ICE. Being a student in BPS should not lead you down the road of the criminal justice system nor the hands of ICE, which may lead to detention and deportation. Quickly, one, I recommend hiring the truly needed number of nurses, social workers, counselors, and psychologists in all BPS schools. Abide by the petition of Student Immigration Movement and BTU Immigrant Rights for stricter guidelines to protect our students from police and ICE involvement. And three, to recommend the humane release of immigrant detainees and decarceration of our general prison population due to the crowded conditions and limited healthcare in the wake of the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Sarah Edrisu. She'll be followed by Gabriella Chu, Adead Abiyoye, and Lady Casenyo.
So first and foremost, I'd like to thank you all for the hard work that has gone into ensuring that our community is resourced, safe, and healthy during this very critical time. I hope you all are well. My name is Sarah Edrisu, and I'm the Executive Director of Educators for Excellence Boston. We work to ensure that teachers have a leading voice in the policies that impact their students and their profession. You've already heard from educators who've made their voices heard on these very important issues. Over the past year, we've worked with over three hundred BPS educators to select an interview that they felt was pressing in Boston. Educators chose to advocate for positive school culture and created the Thriving Not Just Surviving Campaign. Now, more than ever, we know that our students need to come back to schools with a positive school climate. For many students, school is their safe place. In the wake of this pandemic, clearly, we see that in terms of nutritional needs, but the thing that we're not hearing as much right now is the importance of school as a safe place for psychological safety. To promote positive school culture, so that students thrive and not just survive, we are specifically wanting to see three things in the Student Opportunity Act Plan due to DESI soon. Tonight, BPS educators will speak or submit testimony who are part of E for E, and we have also shared eleven additional videos as testimonies to the school committee that we urge you to view. Asking for three things to support positive school culture in Boston. First, a CFC or family liaison in every school, continuing upon the investments that you've already made. Second, training for educators on nonpunitive discipline practices such as restorative justice practices. Third, expansions and programs targeting the reduction of discipline disparities. Again, we'd like to ensure that these three priorities are part of the plan that BPS makes to DESI. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Gabriella Chu, followed by Adead Abiyoye, Lady Cassenyo, and Deborah Gray. Ms. Chu? Gabriella with us? No? Okay. Adead Abiyoye? Lady Cassenyo?
Hello?
Hello. Hi.
Oh, hi.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adead Abiyoye, and I am a third-grade inclusion teacher at the Higginson Lewis K. A. School. I'm representing myself, and I'm also part of the Educators for Excellence Group. This COVID experience has shown us that it is imperative for families to be partners in their child's education rather than supplemental to the work that's going on at school. When the student speaker talked about ideals, I mean, an ideal is that a student shouldn't have to, school shouldn't have to choose between having really important managerial positions or having a family liaison. There's so many ideals that I think all of us could wish for and talk about that I think that the budget committee needs to take into consideration. I would love for every school to have a full-time, not just a .5, but a full-time parent liaison that's trained and equipped in working with Black and Brown communities, and is trained in bringing together and creating programs that have positive impacts on communities. Part of schools is to have, you know, places that students can feel welcome and happy, that families can feel welcome and happy, places where families feel welcome to come in, talk to their teachers, talk to their principals. We want to make sure that schools are working with families to make learning communities stronger. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Lady Cassenyo, followed by Deborah Gray and Janelle Bruno. If you could all please raise your hands. Ms. Cassenyo?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lady Cassenyo. Thank you for hearing us, Boston School Committee members. I will be speaking on behalf of a Boston Public School teacher who gave me, respectfully so, the honor to read his testimony. And it goes like this, and it is, "My name is Gustavo Pereira, a teacher at the Edwards Middle School in Charlestown, Massachusetts. I am honored to petition your consideration, resources, and efforts to include in the school's budgets, funds, program that improve positive school culture, including options for students during their elective classes choices in every school. For us at the Edwards, that means we need additional funding for our karate classes. The reason is simple, elegant, and proactive. Karate, like restorative justice, social-emotional learning, and other programs can increase learning retention while reducing disciplinary issues. To start off, I want to quickly read our karate mantra to you. One, seek perfection of character. Two, be faithful. Three, endeavor. Four, respect others. And five, refrain from violent behavior. By helping students develop principles of self-discipline, self-esteem, and self-defense, we offer students meaningful choices that foster learning academic content with focused dedication and purposes. We began this past September of 2019 at the Edwards Middle School, teaching, learning, and practicing karate with two consecutive classes each Friday. Students start out each class with gestures of gratitude, warm-up, exercises, and specific choreographic movements practiced during the class, leading to specific mastery of stage movements. And to finish, students practice a school-off exercise, respect the karate mantra, and get dismissed. Is this my time?
No, twenty seconds.
Thank you. We are connecting karate with social-emotional development and academic achievement. Therefore, I, a teacher from the frontline concerned with our youth chances and choices, urge you to allocate funds on the expansion programs such as described above to end student discipline disparities among racial and economic subgroups. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter."
Thank you very much. Next, we'll hear from Deborah Gray. She'll be followed by Janelle Bruno, Al Vega, and Ruby Reyes. If you could all raise your hand and let us know that you're with us still. Begin with Ms. Gray. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. This is the first time I'm using this. Well, my name is Deborah Gray, and I'm a grandparent of a student at the Lee Academy Pilot School, which I love. I want to thank the Superintendent Dr. Casellius and the school committee members for opening this up, this forum for parents and the community to voice our concerns. My son, my grandson is in the second grade. It's, Lee Academy Pilot School is an inclusion school. And it, when he started there last year, it was such a breath of fresh air because there were no yelling heard in the hallways. You couldn't hear teachers yelling at kids. You didn't see children running down the hall screaming. I mean, it was such a peaceful place. And that's not exaggeration. That's just the way it was because of the whole inclusion piece. Now, what it means to me is that extra resources and attention, as well as the effort is made to get to know the individual students and their families. Now, both positions at the Lee Academy that are in jeopardy of being cut are positions that I have come, become very close to because they're so close to my grandson. He has, so, okay, he has social-emotional concerns. I don't know if anyone out there has ever heard a child, a seven- or eight-year-old, say, "I wish I was dead." That struck me and sent me into panic mode to take care of my grandson, to make sure that his learning experience is better. There are folks in the staff at the Lee Academy who meet with him when he gets off that bus in the morning. They see him during midway throughout the day. They check in with him at the end of the day. And they don't do this because they have to. This is a true, honest concern that they have for my grandson, as well as the other students who are having a rough time right now. I want to say that I really appreciate, you know, what is being done during this pandemic. And, you know, it's helpful, but I also want to speak out in terms of a parent. I don't have formal teacher or educator training. And so I get, I've gotten a lot of worksheets and websites to go to, to help him. But he's, he was saying, before this thing broke out, he didn't want to learn. He didn't want to go to school. He, you know, all these things that were driving me up the wall, and I didn't know how to deal with. So what I want to say is, please, retain the positions at the Lee School, and preferably the staff that are in them because they're honest and genuine people. I also want to say one thing, just one thing.
You wrap it up, please. Yes, you're welcome. Pass your time, and we have other folks waiting to speak. Thank you.
I am. I am. Thank you. So my concern is that families across social, emotional, and all those economic lines are feeling like we're being pushed out of Boston. One way to keep us here is to take great care of our children and to use the human capital, which is the greatest resource we have, to help our children succeed as they move on in school. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gray.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Janelle Bruno, followed by Al Vega, Ruby Reyes, and Megan Hines. If you could let us know that you're with us, please. Beginning with Ms. Bruno.
Hi, thank you for letting us all come and talk amongst this crazy time. I'm speaking on behalf of Access for All, which is a community group in Charlestown that has formed from a group of parents. And I just want to touch upon a couple points. So despite a year of advocating for more supply to meet the growing demand of K-1 and K-2 strands, BPS still does not have accurate or up-to-date data to reflect this demand. Although repurposing of Edwards Middle School gives our community hope for more elementary seats in the future, what happens to the kids that don't have seats now? BPS wants the community to solve the problem. Meanwhile, it is the current cohort of students who do not have time on their side while the adults take time to plan. Second, despite a year of discussions around more transparent and timely waitlist process, including solutions generated from the community, nothing has been done to update technologies as we are rapidly approaching the assessment assignment process. To continue with that, we just learned today that the assignment process has further complicated for K-2 and upper-grade families with the decision to move enrollment period out until further notice. Assignment is projected for June or July, which is an unreasonable timeframe to make major life decisions for all, every single person involved. All children should have adequate time to transition to their new school and classroom, setting them up for success, especially this year with the amount of unstable stability that we are all experiencing. And finally, East Boston receives priority seating in student assignment based on the geographical isolation it faces. However, there is no plan for Charlestown residents to receive such priority despite the community's geographical constraints. Thank you very much for taking the time to hear us, and we are looking forward to hearing more about the decision process going into K-2 for the current students who do not have seats in our area. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bruno. Next, we'll hear from Al Vega, followed by Ruby Reyes, Megan Hines, and Carrie Anne Conley. Mr. Vega?
Hello, can you hear me now? Yes, okay. Hi, my name is Al Vega. Good evening, Superintendent Casellius and school committee members. I am the Director of Policy and Programs at MASCOSH, the Massachusetts Coalition for Occupational Safety and Health. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of our Healthy Schools Initiative, and I'm also here as a member of BEJA, the Boston Educational Justice Alliance. So I'd like to first start tonight by thanking you all for the tremendous work that you've been doing to support, to create a support system for our young people and families while school buildings are closed. We are deeply appreciative of the way that equity has been centered in the decision-making processes around the resources needed to fully support our students and families during this pandemic. My testimony differs a bit tonight from that message, as I am also mindful that sometimes in moments of upheaval, decisions of significance get made without the full transparent community process needed to ensure that all voices and concerns are being heard and that the needs of the most impacted communities have been placed front and center. Over the past few years, we have unfortunately seen decisions made in this way. The Build BPS decision to close the West Roxbury Academy, Urban Science Academy, allegedly due to unsafe building conditions, and the McCormick Middle School was made during the transition between Superintendents Chang and Perel with no impact, no input from impacted communities. The Request for a Proposal for the Future Use of the McCormick Field was released during the transition between Superintendent Peril and Casellius, again with no true input from those impacted surrounding communities. In both cases, the rush to make decisions led to the disenfranchisement of school communities in ways that has deeply damaged the trust between BPS and many school communities throughout our city. The lack of response from BPS leaders has been an indicator that decisions have already been made, sometimes behind closed doors and without transparency. The work we do as a city and what occurs at BPS over the next several weeks has the potential to rebuild some of that trust and set new healthy patterns of communication. For that reason, as an organization that supports Boston Public School students and families, we ask that you not make any rushed decisions of significance regarding Build BPS that pertains to any Boston Public School buildings, school communities, or school land during this time of uncertainty and upheaval. Our students and families are experiencing significant instability as it is, and any additional turmoil, regardless of the end goal, would only exacerbate their stress in these unprecedented times and create more harm. We postpone any kinds of these decisions until a time communities can be fully engaged in the ways that they deserve and the ways that should be a standard for how we make decisions at the district level. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Next, we'll hear from Ruby Reyes, followed by Megan Hines and Carrie Anne Conley. Ms. Reyes?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great. My name is Ruby Reyes, and I'm the Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance. And I wanted to first thank Dr. Casellius and the BPS Central Office staff for working to respond to the coronavirus as best you are capable. Much like the gaps in the income of families of color in Boston, BPS school communities experience the same inequitable distribution of resources. It's during times of crisis that the distance between the haves and the have-nots becomes even more evident. We want to ensure that school committee prioritizes the most vulnerable students, including the rising number of homeless students. During this time of crisis, BEJA asks again that you develop a BPS budget that fully meets the needs of all students with additional resources to buttress this time of great need. We need BPS to decide what a quality education is for every BPS student, then develop a budget based on that. If you have known that our structural needs are forty-four million to sustain yourself, why have we not received that continually until now? We have not been receiving the forty-four million until this year, which has created an ongoing historical compounded deficit for school budgets. This is why the current budget process does not work. While we applaud some of the improvements in this budget, this is also when BPS schools need more resources, not less. We are incredibly worried about what is going to happen after the closures and we are also incredibly worried about BPS's methods of communication and community input during this time. We hope you will develop innovative ways of reaching out to families and create new methods of community input. As in the past, silence from BPS does not help anyone, especially in times of crisis. For example, the Memorandum of Understanding for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed on March tenth puts BPS in a dangerously vague, unsafe place with the state, with important details to be determined in the next sixty days. Latino families in East Boston and the Charlestown schools are being targeted through the kaleidoscope network, which is being forced upon them. The other schools are a part of a vague network they have applied to. This is unfair targeting with specific communities of color or racism. This MOU is signed with, without respectful thought put into this time of global crisis, and it needs to be rectified. DES and BPS should not have signed this agreement in the midst of crisis, creating even more uncertainty. We need you to decide what every child should have, then come to a visionary budget, not one that depends on what a school, what a child, which sign to. The BEJA pledge has created a list of items that each school should have. Want community input on how to spend Student Opportunity Act funds? Please refer to the pledge. BEJA, once again, will be visionary leaders by creating a budget for each student in BPS to have a quality education, one that addresses the needs of crisis. Request a budget is what, that is needed to survive. Do not continue with business as usual because it's not usual.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Next, we'll hear from Megan Hines, followed by Carrie Anne Conley. Ms. Hines?
Hello?
Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Megan Hines and I am the Reading Recovery Teacher and Special Educator at the Conservatory Lab Charter School in Dorchester. Reading Recovery is a highly effective, short-term intervention, one-to-one tutoring program for low-achieving first graders. I'm speaking on behalf of the 31 Reading Recovery Teachers in Boston on the topic of the Teacher Leader Position, which has been cut from next school year's budget. Without this position, Reading Recovery will completely disappear from 26 schools across Boston Public Schools next year. My school began a partnership with BPS Reading Recovery three years ago and it has had an extremely positive impact on our students' literacy performance as well as our school-wide literacy instruction. I started working at this school four years ago and we did not have Reading Recovery. That year, we had 40% of our first grade reading significantly below grade level at the end of the school year. We needed a more intensive and effective intervention program in addition to better classroom instruction. We then partnered with BPS Reading Recovery. Since having Reading Recovery at our school, we have had 95% of all students reading on grade level by the end of our first grade, by the end of each year. The only difference between these school years was Reading Recovery. In addition, in addition to directly impacting our student data, our literacy classroom instruction as a school has improved. As part of Reading Recovery, teachers participate in constant commitment with the teacher leader. I have brought everything I have learned from professional development to my school. Our teachers are more skilled and knowledgeable in teaching all components of literacy because of this additional support.
Twenty seconds.
In conclusion, without Reading Recovery, we will have many more students behind and teachers with less support in teaching reading and writing. In conclusion, I'm asking you to reinstate the Reading Recovery Teacher Leader Position. Without this position, Reading Recovery will not exist in Boston.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Carrie Anne Conley. Ms. Conley?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to express my input about the elimination of the Reading Recovery Teacher Leader Position. I'm a BPS parent and reading specialist. I have taught at both Orchard Gardens in Roxbury and the Ellison Parks in Matapan. I've worked with the Reading Recovery Program, both as a first-grade classroom teacher and as the Reading Recovery Teacher. Reading Recovery is a research-based program used worldwide to accelerate our most struggling readers to an average performance. So they will be able to flourish in their classrooms at the same academic performance level as their peers. It works to build a self-extending system and teach first graders how to take on new knowledge and organize it so they can keep doing that even if there's not a teacher supporting them. Last year, 215 first graders were chosen through a data-driven selection process to receive Reading Recovery instruction in Boston. In addition, each Reading Recovery Teacher serves 22 to 40 students outside of Reading Recovery in different roles, such as teaching whole-class literacy blocks, small groups, English language learner supports, and literacy as a specialty block, and special education support. That means that up to 1,240 BPS students are impacted by the monthly Reading Recovery Professional Development led by Kelly McDermott. I participated in professional development with Kelly for Reading Recovery, which is one-on-one with students, leveled literacy instruction, which is one to three with students, guided reading instruction, which is one to six with students, and whole classroom instruction. Kelly is able to take a deep level of theory and immediately make it applicable so I can walk into my classroom tomorrow and make changes that reach our most struggling readers. Kelly is able to reach brand-new teachers and teachers with decades of experience in one session and have everyone walk out feeling that that ability to make a change. Her impact is changing the lives of students in Boston by turning them into literate members of society. In addition, between 2011 and last year, Kelly has brought $668,130.25 in grants into Boston.
Twenty seconds.
All grants are written and administered by the Reading Recovery Teacher Leader and directly offset training, ongoing professional development, student and teacher materials, university affiliation, and data collection fees to school. Based on Reading Recovery data across the Commonwealth for 2019 to 2020 Massachusetts, I'm finishing now, state senators and legislators doubled funding for Reading Recovery and Boston received $128,781 through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in addition to the amount I stated before. Please reinstate this position. It will negatively affect our district in terms of student achievement and professional development if we lose it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conley. Chairperson LaCanto, that concludes our speakers for public comment.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Thank you for the 27 or so folks that provided public comment this evening and one cat. Your input is critical, of course, for our consideration as we move into a budget vote just a short time from now. And we appreciate the contributions that the community has made throughout the last two months as we've held three budget hearings and a number of additional regular school committee meetings to hear about the budget proposal for fiscal year 21. I want to remind everyone that, once again, as Mr. Cooter began this evening, all budget documents are available online at bostonpublicschools.org/budget. And you can go there to view the increase, a detailed summary of the increased funding that is proposed for this school year. So now that we're through public comment, just going to take a quick procedural motion. We are going to end this hearing and move directly into the regular school committee meeting. So I'd like to unmute all of our members and ask if there's a motion to adjourn tonight's school committee meeting. And it might just take us a second to open everyone up here. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any discussion or objection to that motion? I think we still have a few members muted, so I just want to make sure we have a second to make sure everyone's open. Yes, I think, I think that. We've got everybody. Okay. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. As I mentioned just a moment ago, we'll move right into tonight's school committee meeting. And we typically begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. I was hoping I'd have a flag background for the meeting this evening that we could use for the pledge, but I was able to go off camera for just a moment and find the flag in my, my hall closet. So I'm going to stand up and we can recite the pledge together.
It'll do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
New frontiers, everyone. Well, thank you, once again, for bearing with the new technology. As I mentioned at the outset this evening, you know, tonight's meeting is being abbreviated and we are only going to handle the matters that require a vote this evening or have some other specific timeline that requires us to act in order to receive certain funds into the district. So a number of the other items that we've discussed in recent months at retreats that may have been scheduled for tonight's meeting are being delayed until a later date. I do anticipate at this time, for those that might be interested, that we will resume our regular meeting schedule as we move into April with virtual meetings. But we, like many other things in daily life right now, are moving on a day-to-day basis to determine what is available to us and what might be a priority for us to handle as a committee. So this evening, I want to start first with something very typical and functional, which is approval of the minutes from the February 26, 2020 school committee meeting. The approved minutes will be posted on the school committee website tomorrow, along with the other meeting documents, if these minutes are approved. The meeting, the minutes have been shared with all members in their digital packets prior to the meeting and have been, I'm sorry, they haven't been posted to the website just yet, but as I mentioned earlier, they will be if they're approved. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the February 26, 2020 meeting as presented. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to approving the minutes by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Now, typically, this is the point where we have the superintendent present her superintendent's report, but Superintendent Casilius was gracious enough to begin the meeting earlier this evening with her superintendent's report. So we're going to move right into our student representatives' update. And Ms. Reyes, we've asked you to speak specifically tonight to what the student experience has been to date over the last week or so of online learning and give us some feedback so that the superintendent can take that back and continue to refine the programming that we're providing to our students. Ms. Reyes?
Absolutely. So I want to provide you all with a quick update on some of the things that BSEC has started doing and how we've sort of adjusted to this situation among, amongst some other thoughts. So we continue to do our Monday and Thursday meetings, but we have members from our steering committee working group and the student executive council or cabinet, excuse me, all together on Mondays and Thursdays now and we're using Zoom to do these meetings. And we are looking to sort of continue doing our typical BSEC work, but through the breakout rooms that we can use virtually. We've also been joined by the superintendent on numerous occasions to discuss online learning and sort of how to keep up with things as, you know, the situation progresses and also how to keep students involved in their education. BSEC is also doing midday check-ins with our students and staff are calling folks one by one to make sure that we all have the resources that we need, both physical resources, sort of like mental capacity to like deal with this entire situation. And we continue to do our Wednesday support groups, but they're now happening virtually. And it's also, it's become something that happens every week instead of every two weeks. This transition, of course, has been hard for various reasons. It's something that none of us have lived through. And we've all had to deal with switching from learning in a classroom to learning online. And because of that, there's been a range of concerns that have been passed on to me from students in BSEC and from some of my peers. And I want to quickly share some of those with you all. Something I've heard often is that not every student has heard from either their teacher or their school about what the plan is for them and what learning should look like for them going forward. There's also, we've heard that there seems to be no regulation on the amount of work that each student is getting. Some students have told me that they've had hours of work to do and some say that they've had almost none. And so this, you know, causes clearly inequity, but also it makes it a lot harder for students to plan out their day if they don't know how much work they're going to be getting for the day or for the week. And that's something that it would be good to look into, sort of setting up regulation for that. A lot of students and superintendent, the superintendent mentioned this earlier, but are asking questions about grading, whether we're grading things that we turn in day-to-day or is it a week by week? What's going to happen to term three grades, all of that? And there's also a lot of students who are wondering what will happen to the support that they received in the classroom because they are currently left in limbo since we're all at home and we can't, you know, convene for these things to happen or for the support to, to really be there. I shared a more exhaustive list of concerns from students with the superintendent and she shared it with members of the executive team. And then members of the executive team have since reached out. And I'm confident that we'll be able to clarify some of these things soon. And moving forward, I think, well, of course, it's the way that we're all handling online learning is maybe first priority in a lot of different ways. This time is also really hard on families and relationships will be tested because we are not, you know, used to staying at home in close quarters with our family members because we spend most of our time out of the week at school. And so I think another thing to keep in mind is how students are doing mentally. Because a lot of us, and this has been said before, a lot of us, school is our safe place. Or we have extracurriculars that are a safe place that we're no longer able to get to. And so these restrictions that are being placed on us don't only restrict our ability to learn, but they also restrict our ability to take weight off when we're out of school or out of the house, excuse me. So yeah, that's sort of, that's my update.
Thanks so much, Ms. Reyes. I really appreciate you taking the time to speak to your peers and collect their concerns and most of all, share those with the superintendent as well as her team. And superintendent, before I open up the floor to the members for any questions, I want to give you an opportunity to respond to anything that Evelyn may have said.
I just want to thank Evelyn for telling it like it is. This is very difficult for our students. They're, they're really trying to adjust quickly, as all of us are really. Parents and families and everybody's adjusting. This has totally taken us out of our comfort zones and we're doing everything we can to address the concerns that the students have brought forward to us. You know, one of the things that is very difficult is that there was a lack of coherence before we started and before COVID happened. I mean, what happened at Snowden is very different than what happened at New Mission is very different than what happened at the cash school. And that just isn't going to change in one week, just to be honest. We are working on a Plan B of a more centralized kind of coherent curriculum to push out to students. I know Andrea Zayas is our chief academic officer, has been thinking through this with the academic team to more centrally look at what, what are the offerings for students? This is incredibly important for equity. And the reason I brought it up when I was doing my tour, when there is a lack of coherence around curriculum, it's very difficult and very challenging to ensure the quality and the equity across all schools. And that's why we are bringing forward the Mass Corps as a way to begin to think about what is the expectation? What do kids have to know and be able to do? And then what are the guide rails that we put around those for all, for all of our schools to uphold? And so we're working on that, Evelyn. I know the BSEC students are really anxious to hear about graduation and other supports. I know our CBHM team has just recently, our Andrea Amador and her team and the social workers and counselors and nurses have just put together a new document that we are going to be pushing out soon around how students can ask for mental health support too. Because I know that that's been on your guys' minds around that and we're starting to curate some other activities for students to be able to do once these restrictions are lifted just a little bit more about the co-curriculars and other opportunities to gather in smaller groups. So we are thinking through some of the suggestions that the students have made. It's just that these restrictions are really tight right now and it makes it a lot more difficult to be creative in this situation. I know I have a conversation with BSEC and the youth cabinet tomorrow and I'll be updating you on some of those things that are in the works, but not quite ready for primetime because of the restrictions.
Thanks so much, Superintendent. Mr. O'Neill, I know you've had a comment.
Yes, Ms. Reyes, I just want to thank you for your thoughtfulness. Ms. Reyes, I want to thank you for your thoughtfulness, both in your questioning earlier and your comments now. You know, as I've been talking with, with young people and they're looking for, you know, adults and older people adults and older people to provide some assurance and some, and some sense of what's going on and where are we going? And honestly, it's really tough for folks right now. You know, some generations look back at nine 11 when there was a stoppage for a period. You know, our parents and grandparents look back at World War II and, you know, you got to go back multiple generations to the, to the Spanish Flu, the 1990, 1919 that probably affected schools. So I'm saying this, that there isn't a, unfortunately, there's not a roadmap on this. And we are learning as we go and the students have to take confidence in the fact that the superintendent and the team do have the best interests of the students in mind and are trying to work through all these challenges. But it also shows the importance of two-way communication right now. So the feet in, so we're very lucky because we have a BSEC that represents all of our high schools for the first time, which is fantastic. You, you and the other leaders of BSEC are playing, filling an invaluable role right now. And the fact that you could say, well, I had a chance to talk with the superintendent and her cabinet and they're responding to our list of concerns is fantastic. That's exactly what we've wanted BSEC to be. So you have a superintendent whose ears are wide open because you are the channel right now. You are the way she can get input about what are students fears, what are their concerns? What are they thinking about? What are they questioning about? So that the communication is never more important than it is right now. And so I just want to thank you and your fellow members of BSEC and encourage you to really keep pushing. And remember, you are that channel of communication to the superintendent, to the team and to the school committee. So thank you for that.
Yeah. And can I just say one more thing too? I think that one of our speakers earlier had mentioned that learning materials weren't going out until June or July. And I just want to clarify with everybody that we did provide learning materials to the schools and then also have them available at the food distribution sites for all of our students. And then they're available online as well. So if you have a Chrome, Chromebook, and so we'll be pushing those out and continuing to provide learning materials. And this is supplemental at this time, so that relieves some of the pressure on students a little bit. But I think, you know, if this continues to go on, there will be a need for us to take attendance and to begin to really monitor the learning so that we can prevent some learning loss here, so.
Thank you, superintendent. We'll move on now to Vice Chair Oliver Davila. And please turn on your microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Evelyn. What you said is just so, so important. I can't underscore that piece. I think BPS has been doing a really great job of getting Chromebooks out there, of putting the meal sites in place. So I really want to uplift that. And at the same time, I do want to say it's very frustrating. And I know the superintendent is frustrated as well about the disparity that our students are experiencing. I'm experiencing myself as a parent and also as a person that works with young people. We've heard this over and over again. So I'm glad that Dr. Casillas is on top of that. She's aware, she's working on it because it really is important. At this time, we are facing grief. So this is not something to be taken lightly. Our students, our families are really going through a grieving process right now. And so if we add on to that, some of the pieces that you're talking about, not knowing what your schedule is going to look like, what your workload is going to look like, what kind of supports you have from your teacher is very unfair to put that on our young people and put that on our families. So I really thank you for bringing that up. And I just wanted to ask you just a little bit about the Wednesday group. I'm really interested if you could just share a little bit about what that runs like and what is happening there? And do you have any staff that is, you know, professional to be able to help? Because I'm sure there's some, you know, major things coming up because of the current situation.
Sorry, I'm a little sister had to ask a question, but um, yes. So it's more of a time for us to check in with each other and a safe space for us to talk to other people that we normally see on Mondays and Thursdays about what's going on at home and that sort of thing. There aren't professionals in the, in the space, but it, it is a space full of people that we're typically, we're comfortable with because it's people, at least that I'm comfortable with because it's people that I see often. And we aren't necessarily collecting information from that so much as just letting people have time to talk about whatever they need to talk about and whatever they need to air out.
Great, thank you. And, and Dr. Casillas, I think that's great that the team is working on those supports, those mental health supports so that we can, we know what families and what young people, we can refer to that. So thank you very much.
It's great that this thing tells you when you have your mute turned on. Thank you again, Vice Chair, for your comments. Are there any other further questions or comments following the student representative's presentation? No? Okay. Well, thank you again, Ms. Reyes, for your report. And thank you once more for surveying your, your fellow students and for continuing to keep us abreast of what student needs are, especially during these trying times. We'll move on now to our first action item this evening, which is grants for approval totaling $7,801,900. Open it up now to questions and comments from the committee. And if you'd like to speak up, you can certainly just unmute your microphone and, and ask any questions. I'll give it a moment. Well, hearing no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neil. Is there any objection to approving the grants by unanimous consent?
No.
All right. Hearing none, the grants are approved. Thank you. Our next action item this evening is superintendent's final FY21 budget proposal in the amount of $1,258,633,065. Earlier this evening, excuse me, yes, Chief Financial Officer and Mr. Nate Cooter presented the superintendent's revised FY21 budget proposal. I'll now turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
I just want to thank Nate and his entire team for this budget and the mayor, of course, for the increases. We know that there's a lot of work to still be done, given the COVID crisis that we are undertaking and possibly any adjustments that will need to be made as we, the situation continues to evolve. So we'll continue to keep a handle on that and then take any of the feedback that we've had also in terms of our soft landings, we continue to look at those, you know, in terms of impacts to schools, especially as we think about the COVID crisis and how that's impacting our students, their mental health, their relationships. Obviously, that's heavy on my heart. It's heavy on all of your hearts as well as we want to create as much normalcy to our, you know, for us. Oh, I again thank Nate and his team for this incredible budget and ask for your support.
Well, thank you so much, superintendent. Typically, what we do on budget evenings is to go around once across the table to ensure that every member has an opportunity to ask any final questions or... Well, let me start with that first. We'll, we'll go around to make sure that if there's no further questions, that we can then move on to a discussion about the vote. What we'll then do is we'll go around once again to each of the members and ask folks to share any final thoughts about this year's budget, the proposal. And if they choose to do so at that time, share where they intend to vote on the motion in just a few moments. And then from there, we will move into a motion for a vote on the, on the budget proposal. So looking around the table, I can see almost everyone on the thumbnails at the top of the screen. So if anyone would like to, if anyone has any further questions, you can raise your hand and I will, you can physically raise your hand as opposed to the Zoom virtual raise hand. And we'll get to you before we move on to final discussion. Okay, looks like Dr. Rivera had another question, so I'm going to start with you and then we will move to Mr. O'Neil.
So thanks again for your hard work on all of this budget process. As I mentioned earlier in my earlier question about the need to have flexibility to sort of address these, this current crisis. If we were to revisit the budget, like what would that process look like? Is there, like, would you, Dr. Casillas, be reporting back to us? Like, you know, maybe at every meeting coming up from now on? Or what would this procedure look like to say, you know, can we revise our budget? Yeah, like, how does, what is the technicalities of that?
Well, I'm going to speak up first on that, Dr. Rivera. And then Mr. Cooter, if he's still on the line, he can certainly speak up and certainly the superintendent as well. So for background, the budget process follows the statutory process. So we're obligated at the end of March here to vote on a budget. And that budget then gets folded in with the city's proposed budget, the mayor's proposed budget for consideration by the city council, who has a series of hearings through the end of June before moving on to a vote in that body on the, the total proposed budget. And so right now, what we're doing is taking a vote on the increased budget allocation that we've received from the city and with, you know, additional funds from federal and state and grant authorities as well. And will then be, and that is based on what we know or perhaps in the past tense, knew about what our plans would be for the upcoming school year. Now, as we start, started earlier this evening and certainly as I've mentioned a number of times, I think we all acknowledge that next year is likely to look different than what we have planned over the several months that the district takes to consider its budget. For, you know, nearly $1.3 billion budget in 125 schools, our district works nearly year round on producing a budget that appropriately corresponds to the needs of our students. And for many schools, they began having conversations with the center back in, in November. So all of the developments over the last couple of weeks doesn't put this district in a position to turn on a dime, if you will, or make even over the, the next few weeks or months big changes to what we anticipate for our programming and expenditures for next year. But having said that, what I think might be most appropriate is as we come into view with first of all, the, what, what the orders that we'll have, will receive from the executives at the state and the city level around when we can, from a public health perspective, resume the school year. We intend then take the cues from those directives on what, if anything, might be different about next year's school year. And then I think secondarily, we know that the catastrophic effects of the COVID-19 virus on the economy to date and the trickle down effects that that has on the revenues that the city, the state and the federal government is able to collect through taxes and, and other revenue sources. What we don't know is what, how that might affect the revenue that funds education in BPS and in schools nationwide. So as we continue to have a clear view on what those effects are, we will then be in a better position to talk about what further changes may need to be made, if any, to what our allocation is for next year and how we're spending those dollars. So I think back, and I'm sorry for this long explanation, but, you know, I've given some thought to this over the last couple of days and conversations with our, our budget partners at the district and, and at the city as, as well as at the federal level informed by Mr. O'Neil. I, I think back to what Ms. Robinson asked for last year, which was an accounting in the fall of where the dollars went that were allocated in last year's budget as well as unallocated and sat in the reserve fund and were dispersed over the summer to follow students as they move through our system. So I think, you know, best case scenario, we will be back here talking on a regular basis as information develops. But I think we'll probably be in the best position to talk critically about what the needs are at the district sometime later in the summer into the early fall. So as I said, I think Mr. Cooter or Superintendent Casillas may have additional commentary in, in that regard, but that's my view, at least procedurally from the committee's perspective.
I don't have anything more to add. I don't know if Nate does in terms of the process other than, you know, coming back to you all with any kind of new thoughts on it.
Yeah, I would just add that we, we do have a standard practice of providing a budget update to you throughout the process. We typically start that in October for a November budget update. That includes both our projected spending, which is typically the topic of, of conversation. But in that, it's also an update on our budget and any changes that we've made to the line items and has updates that we can provide. I think, given the unique nature of this year, if there are additional asks for future conversations, we'd be happy to come back and present to the school committee. And certainly any new costs, new revenue streams that come from any groups and any changes to federal projections, we will come back and update you for another vote, which is, is part of the standard practice, but it's something we'll be watching very closely over the summer when we come back and actually have a vote to accept and expend our federal entitlement grants as well.
I, I think that just one thing I want to put on your radar is the census and the COVID crisis, you know, and its impact potentially on the census. And obviously, you know that our free and reduced price lunch and other accounts for our children demographics and this kind of supports that we get from our federal partners and, and state funding. Sometimes those formulas follow for funding. And so we want to make sure that we're, you know, still diligent and following up with that. And then the only other thing I think we could come back sooner to you on is probably summer school and any changes that we anticipate for any summer learning loss or additional costs with that. But, you know, the mayor has his resiliency fund. There's been a lot of goodwill in the community. And so we may have opportunity to do a lot more with partners and a lot more with some of our philanthropic community in the future. We just have been in trying to manage the crisis at, on the front end right now and then we'll start thinking proactively for summer.
Very good. Thank you, superintendent. Mr. O'Neil, did you have something to add?
Actually, yes, and I'm glad Mr. Cooter mentioned it because Dr. Rivera, they will be back to us this summer when the final federal allocations come out. They're not known now about Title I, Title II, et cetera. As Mr. Cooter said, they do a conservative projection now and then the federal allocations will come out. And so typically, we're taking a vote on that at some point during the summer usually, about how that is spent. But just new information for you right as, as you continue along the process. And also I would anticipate that there would be a vote on our part when we do receive, if we do receive funding from this stimulus, stimulation bill that is being debated in the House and Senate as we speak. So that would potentially be additional funding for us as well. But the uncertainty over, as the chair said, how this impacts the state funding and how it impacts the city funding, all we know for certain is it will very negatively impact city, state and federal budgets for a while, unfortunately.
Indeed. And it's, you know, unfortunately sobering news. We do see, you know, every day what, what the potential impacts here will be. But nevertheless, you know, in light of all that, we do have, in comparison to our... sister districts across the country that are independent districts and have their own sources of revenue that they raise, that can be a good thing in in good times. But in times where the sources might not be diversified and might not be able to be raised as easily, we we should feel fortunate as a dependent district to be able to rely on support that can be provided in times of need from the city. And moreover, in this context this year, of course, we don't want to lose sight of the fact that this this budget allocation is going up once again this year, and it's actually going up quite a bit this year by $80 million, in fact, which is, I believe it's about $44 million in new, excuse me, built in costs increases and $36 million in new funding. So we're in quite a unique position this year. This is the largest dollar amount allocation increase that the district has seen going back 40 years, and it's the largest percentage increase that we've seen since school year 1999 to 2000. So, you know, in context, we are, we are in a secure and supported position from the financial perspective at this time, and we owe a great deal of thanks to the city for seeing us through in that regard. So I want to take a quick look around and see if there are any further questions. Mr. O'Neal, it looks like you've got another comment, and then we'll move on to, let's unmute you first, Mr. O'Neal.
I'm sorry, I had made that comment before in in response to Dr. Rivera's, and I just did have one question for Mr. Cooter, or this may be more appropriate for the superintendent, whoever you feel. Thank you for the soft landings that you provided and the thoughtful approach you took to schools. I know you could not accommodate every request. Clearly, we heard from some people tonight whose requests were not able to be met either at Excel, the Academy, you know, very, very the the Shaw, very small individual items relative to the size of the budget, but important at those local schools. But you were able to provide a number of soft landings, and thank you for that. My question would be is if there are additional resources that come available because of the stimulus bill, so on and so forth, where do you, would would you anticipate that priorities would go to additional new programs? Or would you try to provide additional soft landings? I'm just trying to help have an understanding of where your priorities would be if additional resources become available.
I think it's both and, right? I think there are some schools that we'd like to do more. We did provide significant soft landings to Excel. And so we and a couple other schools as well, and I know that Nate's been able to provide some of that information to you. So there are still considerations that we are taking to to be able to do. But I think that the new programming that we would have to do would be anything in response to this COVID. You know, whether that's summer learning, whether it's additional support around virtual learning, around centralization of potentially a more equitable push out, if this goes longer of what that would look like, services for special education students and our compensatory obligations there. So I think that, you know, those are the things that are top of mind in our EL students and translation services. We've exhausted really a lot of our translation services because, you know, they're translating so much content that we're trying to push out. You know, there could be additional costs there, so we're just, you know, really trying to meet the needs of our students and and I think that some of those additional costs due to this crisis may may come up. I don't think, I don't, what we are not going to be doing is trying to do a whole lot of new stuff. We're going to be trying to keep as much continuity of what we're doing and then create the systems in place for better coherence, set the expectations and and really drive home the strategic plan that we have and not not put in any new silver bullets, new, you know, new initiatives. So.
I understand. Thank you, Superintendent. And and for the record, I am actually pessimistic about new revenue streams becoming available in light of the pandemic. But I felt it was important to understand what your priorities would be if there were additional resources.
Yeah, it's interesting how Massachusetts does their funding formulas and, you know, the money goes to the states, how that would be distributed because of the way that state funding goes out. So that's why I'm so interested in this federal policy and how that's crafted and how it goes out to our students and through the title funding. Or if it goes right to states and states can issue it as grants and flexible grants, then we would see a lot less of that in Boston.
At least from the preliminary guidance we got this afternoon, it looks like they'll follow the Title I funding formula with 90%, 90% of it going through Title I formulas first to the states. And then, as you know, the state typically is allowed to have a holdback on it. And then they would be encouraged to use Title I funding formulas for all of that money. So at least we have a path as opposed to block grants or that type of thing. But that was the preliminary guidance we got late this afternoon, or actually as this meeting was starting, I think.
Well, that was in the details when it's funding, right?
Of course, very much so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very much, Ms. O'Neal, and thank you again for for your elaboration, Superintendent. So barring any further questions, I think it's appropriate now for us to move around the table with the committee to make any final statements before we move on to the vote. And we will go in seniority order, so we will start with our student representative, Ms. Reyes. And then we will move through the committee and into the the chair, excuse me, the vice chair and the chair. So Ms. Reyes.
All right, well, thank you. I, I mean, we know by this point, but I don't have a vote on the school committee, but I think if I did, well, let me start with this. Last year, I said that I would have voted no, because I think last year's budget was in a lot of ways really disappointing disappointing and hurtful for a lot of our communities and some specific schools. And I think that there has been tremendous growth between last year and this year, both in how the process has been done and in terms of how many people have really been heard. And I think part of that is because, I mean, there's a lot of turmoil last year in terms of leadership turnover and all of that. And so this year, with that sort of being settled, I think we've been able to look at it in a different, through a different lens, and that's been rather refreshing. And this year, I, if I had a vote, I would vote to approve this budget with hesitation. Just because I think that there is more to be done and certainly more growth to come. And I think that we're in a place where we could definitely be asking for more. But I I do appreciate that there has been a lot of growth between things that were budgets that we've seen in the past and the the budget this year. And there are certainly, there is less hurt in this budget than there was in the lot in the one from last year. But again, I think there is still growth to be done, and there are still better ways to do our budget hearings and I think more ways to get our community involved in these decisions as we move forward. And that's all.
Well, thank you very much for this, Reyes. Mr. Tron.
Oh, hi. Finally, I got a chance to speak a little bit. First of all, even the public health climate that that we are in right now, we all anticipate that, you know, the the budget will be fluid, given what Mr. O'Neal and Mr. Loquanto had just spoken about the federal, the federal funding. But I believe that we have a pretty solid stronghold on 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 our budget right now. And I, I, I also think, okay, I do agree with Evelyn that we can do more. I understand that, you know, there's always a need to do more. But in my mind, there is no doubt that the administration, the CD administration with the commissioner, I, the superintendent, and through the the very able hand of Mr. Nathan Cooter, I will survive. And the the budget as it stands, I have I have no problem with it at all. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Tron. We'll move on now to Dr. Rivera. And remember to unmute your microphone before you begin.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
So so I'm gonna, I'm gonna support on the budget for many of the reasons that Ms. Reyes pointed out as well, that, you know, there sadly to hear still from the testimonies that, you know, there's there's still cuts being happening in some schools. And, you know, so that is something I certainly don't support and wish that that there was more resources, even more resources to have, you know, things like a, you know, a social worker and a family liaison coordinator in every school, just as we've achieved that with nurses, especially if we do get additional resources, I would love to see that go towards, again, that social emotional supports that that our young people need and our families need. I do also appreciate that there were significant supplemental changes to many schools, I think was 53 schools since the original budget. So again, that's, that supports, again, the the kind of leadership that we're trying to have more collaboration and engagement. And so I appreciate that leadership in in making those increases and listening to to folks in the community as well. I like that there also been a significant investments in the diversification of the teaching and staff, resources for that increased, resources increased for special ed and EL supports. So again, I would love to see every school have a social worker, a family liaison, a librarian, physical ed, you know. But hopefully, we're on that journey together to keep advocating. And so, so, yeah, I'm going to support this budget, and I thank everyone for their hard work on it.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rivera. Move on now to Ms. Robinson.
Yes, thank you. I agree with all of my colleagues of what has been said about both the successes and also the concerns that we still have schools that are facing some cuts. I'm hoping that, given this long time, that schools are working in different ways, that hopefully that there will be more conversations within schools to really look at that first statement that we have about the budget, that every child in every classroom in every school has the same opportunity to achieve greatness. I believe that our teachers and our school leaders and all of us are learning a lot about what is and isn't happening well in our schools now. And with the hope of some of the trainings, et cetera, that is in the budget for teachers, things will improve. But I really do hope that everyone is doing a lot of reflection to make sure that the dollars that we're spending now really are being spent well and to really think together collectively about what we can do better. And hopefully that there may be ways of going back. I'm sure there will be need to go back and look, because we don't know when the pandemic is going to end and how we will end this school year or what new issues may rise out of needs as we move forward. So to be able to both say, yes, we approve the budget now for what we know and understand, but we will have that moment to be able to come back to, we we look at things depending on how we come out of this particular set of issues need, I feel would be really important to me.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. We will move on now to Dr. Coleman.
Good evening, you know, I, this is as always a very difficult process, but one of the things I want to point out is that over, this has been the least contentious budget season in my term on the school committee. And I think, and I want to attribute that to a couple of things. One, you know, the 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 city's decision to finally attempt to provide us some resources, more the resources we need to do the work that we're trying to do, and I commend both the chair and the superintendent on working with the well with the mayor to get a a heavier budget from which we can start to share these resources with our with our with our schools. Clearly, I think that the district has done an increasingly better job of working with principals and school communities about understanding the budget development process. I think that can get better. And again, one of the reasons that I am supportive of this budget is then when, after going through our formulas, the district response responded responsibly and caringly to the schools who identified its needs and tried to make those adjustments. And so that process is one I didn't respect. You know, we know we need more money. We need more of the Chapter 70 money. We need more money from the city in order to do the work that we that that our children deserve. But given the the defined amount of money we have, I want to support the process, and I'm a clear vote yes.
Thank you very much, Dr. Coleman. Move on next to Mr. O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I gotta chuckle how you're going in honor in order of how long we've been on the committee. It it made me realize that this is, in fact, the 12th budget that I'll be voting on at BPS. And it is the most unusual one I have voted on for a number of reasons. First of all, so many people across the city and across the state join hands to push for the Student Opportunity, the Student Opportunity Act and provide new funding, force the state to provide new funding. So from BSAC to BESIA to everyone, the Boston Teachers Union, all of us, it was a nice coalition to have together to make that happen. And then for the city to step up, and and quite frankly, Superintendent Castellius, for for you to join us and have this be your first budget and work with the mayor to provide three years of incremental new funding so that we can not just always make that Hobson's choice of Robin Peter to pay Paul, what program do we cut to add a new one? But instead be able to actually cover the majority of our costs and have new priorities and allow you to take the work you're doing about a strategic vision after your Community Listening Act and say, here's where I want to start to do in year one, year two, year three. Have never had that opportunity before. Many times in the past, the the city has been very generous, we've worked hard on it, but sometimes we've had to make some really, really difficult decisions. And yes, it is painful to listen to folks from Excel and Shaw and Lee Academy. The Mather parents, we heard of, heard from from a number of times earlier. Those choices are very hard, and particularly when you think in terms of, you know, a lot of it is because of involvementships, and that is a decision we have made. And yet this body has been shifting and evolving and not thinking about that. Do we want to think more about a base for a school as opposed to 100% in waiting funding formula? And I think, Dr. Castellius, with your leadership and with Mr. Cooter's leadership and Mr. Bloom's leadership and their work on that, I think you are evolving your thinking in it. I do absolutely believe in weighted student funding formula. I think when we didn't have it, as we've talked about as a body, it showed tremendous inequities in our city, and I would hate to go back to that. But this this causes us to have difficult decisions when there are impacts at at local schools. Having said that, we have in front of us a $1.3 billion budget with most important to me is 36 million in new funding above and beyond our cost increases. I did actually, so $80 million increase. I did actually check with our peers across the country, and I've been unable to find another district that has that large of a percentage increases, increase. Most districts are looking at level funding, if not cuts or small increases, and Most districts are looking at level funding, if not cuts or small increases. And again, I made this comment earlier, I frankly am very pessimistic about what is going to be happening next year. And so I think it is prudent to approve this budget. Yes, it is painful for um some individual programs that we've talked about, but the fact that we are able to have this large of an increase, make new investments, as my colleagues have talked about. And reflect the way that we are evolving, quite frankly, Dr. Casilius, through your leadership with involving the communities, the way you're working with BSAC, the way you're working with other groups to listen and learn and find priorities from that is something that I I can, I want to support and I will support. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Appreciate all of that. Um, we'll move on now to the Vice Chair, Ms. Oliver Davila.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I I echo my um colleague's sentiments. Um, I really wanna thank the community, the entire community for working with us to get funding increased. And also really thank the mayor for putting forth these dollars and thank the superintendent because of also his, his belief in her leadership skills also had a lot to do with those dollars. Obviously, he put those forth because he is very dedicated to our school district and to our young people. So I want to thank him and also you, Chair, for all the work that you've done on this. Um, and I understand, you know, as all my fellow committee members, it's very painful to still hear about cuts. And so, um, you know, if there are ways that we can you know, if there are any dollars, I know we're not, we're not saying that there's going to be dollars coming in, but if there should be and we can supplement some of these schools, then I would love to do that. It is painful to see that. But I am also um a proponent of weighted student funding as well. I I don't think those schools should be punished for the enrollment piece. So we still have a lot of work to do in figuring that uh piece out. I really um support this budget in terms of some of the things that were already mentioned around the uh increase in looking at staff diversity, um, the increases to the high school teacher pipeline, which I think will be really important for the long term. Increases in working with ELL and sped students. Um, and then also the soft landings that were put in place, those, you know, being really sensitive to that was great. I look forward to having more discussions around this budget, around the mass core piece and what that looks like for um high school redesign and also alternative education. And also look forward to discussing more the um Look Bill and Dual Language and uh the opportunities around that. And also, um, uh, the Succeed Boston program is a very important program. And so like looking at how we kind of uh use those resources in our schools, um, so that, you know, students have supports. So I I am in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And sorry for continuing to look over my shoulder. I'm worried my kids are gonna come running up that staircase any moment now, but you know, such is life here with virtual meetings at eight o'clock at night. So in any case, I thank you, uh, Vice Chair, for um your comments particularly focused on um a a number of the programs that are being that are receiving big positive investments this year in this budget because, you know, um, I I found it to be a damn shame, quite frankly, that um throughout this whole process, we've had such a a monumental um effort uh under our new superintendent's leadership to reach out to the community and create a strategic plan that has pulled in so much community input, which was then utilized and provided the confidence necessary um for the uh for the mayor to invest in this district and invest in the superintendent. We've, we've had a few issues that have popped up over time in the last few months and COVID nineteen is only the the um most recent one of those that is really taken away from the, what should be a a game-changing impact uh from uh from what the investment is this year. Uh, and when we talk about that, you know, I I started my comments this evening around what some of those dollar amounts look like in in historical context. And we can't find on our records going back to nineteen eighty, which is as far back as we have uh budget records in digital form at the district. We can't find a dollar amount increase um on the scope and scale of eighty-million dollars this year. Eighty-million dollars represents an eight percent increase in this budget. That's uh the highest percentage increase uh year over year since uh school year nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand. And, you know, as I mentioned, the strategic plan provided the, gave the um the the mayor the confidence he needed in uh the superintendent to invest a hundred million dollars over three years in our school district. And that hundred million dollars begins this year with the thirty-six-million dollars in new funding uh over and above our cost increases that are going to those programs that the Vice Chair mentioned and many other members have mentioned in their comments uh tonight. And those are those key investments that start to really close the opportunity achievement gap for so many of our um highest needs students. Uh, the investments in the thirty-three transformation schools, investments in, excuse me, uh socio-emotional needs uh for our students across the district, uh the the focus on so many of the facilities issues that we have uh in our buildings around uh the city. I I believe that uh the most recent um uh investment here is twenty-five new custodians, which of course, in a public health crisis, couldn't come at a a better time. We've got the one-to-one uh investment on Chromebooks, the purchase of forty thousand new Chromebooks over and above the twenty thousand that we just purchased uh to support uh students during this COVID crisis. We'll get to a one-to-one um ratio for all students in grades seven to twelve. And if I recall correctly, it's a three-to-one ratio for students in uh grades K through six within our schools by using the Chrome cards that exist there currently. That closes that digital divide that, you know, I think over the last few weeks has really been um starkly exposed in many places around our country as we move to online learning um in this crisis. But we're making that investment. It's a timely investment and it's a necessary investment. And I think the final um observation that um I've taken on this budget is that the the focus here has been on equity, not equality, but equity. And I want to go back to that initial um presentation that Mr. Cooter and Dr. Caselli has presented way back on February fifth, they focused on this issue and talked specifically about where the differentiation is and where it lies in uh the investments being made uh through this budget in programming that's keyed to equity, ensuring that the students that need it most are getting the resources they need, what, using the superintendent's words, give kids what they need. And juxtapose that with some of the other uh investments that we're making across the district that maybe on a more that are based in in notions of equality. Uh, those might come out of our requirements that flow from the law or flow from our collective bargaining agreements. But the folk, the the key investments that we have this year are are zeroed in on the notion of equity, and that's been our driving force, and that's been the superintendent's driving force. We'll talk about it more when we get to your uh performance review, Dr. Casilius, but um I don't know any other superintendent that's had to start out her first year with this much money and followed by this catastrophic of a of an event and every other thing that's happened in between. So you're getting a passing grade as far as I'm concerned, but we can certainly talk more about and maybe have a debrief on what's going on this school year when we get to that review. But for now, um, I want to sum it up and just say thank you uh very deeply, first of all, to Mayor Walsh. Again, for um having the confidence in you and your team uh to make these investments in Mayor Walsh's budget and finance team, uh, City CFO, Emma Handy, our Budget Director, Justin Starett and and their staff at, on the did, uh, the district side, um, our CFO and Deputy CFO Nate Cooter and David Bloom and all of their staff, Nate named off all of those folks earlier today. As well as all the the legion of uh executive team members at the district that have worked so hard in academics, uh, in focus areas. And in just the day-to-day work that it requires to keep this district running. We couldn't do it without you. We're very proud of the work that you're doing. And I I think I speak on behalf of the committee when I make that statement. And uh, we're, we're happy to support this budget and look forward to continuing to work through the necessary changes that you're investing in, as well as the the issues that um are facing us at this point in time. So with that, uh, if there are no further questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the final FY twenty-one budget recommendation as presented.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tron. Uh, is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call and roll? And folks, when you're, you hear your name called, be sure to uh turn off the the mute button on your mic.
Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yes.
Dr. Rivera.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Tran.
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila.
Yes.
Mr. Loquito.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you again, uh, Ms. Sullivan. Thank you once more to my fellow colleagues for your your faith and support for this budget and for instilling your confidence in the superintendent and her team as well. Um, I think I I hope you'll join me. Uh, we started this evening with a brief round of applause for the Yelman's work that everyone across the district has been um engaged in over the last several weeks in support of our students, but certainly another round of applause is is in order for the work of our budget team and our superintendent. Thank you, Ms. Reyes, for the uh the additional uh ASL clap. So um, we don't have any other business on uh the agenda for this evening. We handled a public comment earlier in the uh the budget hearing. Uh, so I want to take a quick moment to go around and see if there is any new business uh for the committee before we move to adjourn. We're hearing none. Our next school committee meeting, I'm sorry, did I hear anyone speak up? Okay. Well, our next school committee meeting will tentatively take place on Wednesday, April fifteenth at six P M. Uh, I'll ask members of the public uh to please check the BPS website for further details about a live versus a virtual meeting. And if there is nothing further, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Alrighty. And uh, I bet there's a second out there somewhere. And I'm looking around at all these faces and it's probably unanimous consent. Thank everybody for uh making this happen tonight. Uh, this would